Do I?
You know, I was hoping, I was hoping to have a nice, efficient meeting. You had to throw that out there, Bill.
You know, it did take me all day to prep. We could go into details. Let me just mention the work.
Okay. We're, we're live, so we're gonna get going here. Betty, do we have any minutes or reports that you could see?
I think.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports our announcements of upcoming meetings and/or events. CMCA is having their community discussion forum this afternoon at four o'clock at the Capitol Mall seniors center. I'm planning on going out, I don't know if you guys are gonna show up or not.
Oh, yeah, I saw that. Oh, yeah, I think you were.
Tomorrow Debbie, Kristen, Jim and I, Lepage and I have a meeting just to talk about budget issues. And I'm supposed to attend DNR kitchen cabinet meeting on Friday.
I don't have anything, so.
You can go to Campbell tomorrow if you want to.
No, that's all right.
Board of Realtors, Board of Directors meeting, Perk meeting, Lincoln Blue Tiger quarterback club lunch if we get out of here today. Chamber of Connections Thursday. Home show starts Friday.
Next Tuesday and Wednesday, I'll be in Washington DC with Dr. Rome.
Cool, so if we need to get something done, we know when.
CAF region groundbreaking is Thursday the 27th.
Marvin, you know who to put as presiding, right? Mark's gone next Tuesday and Wednesday.
I know. I know we got session. Just hope it doesn't snow this time. Chris, you think, Chris, you think we can call session?
Possibly.
All right. First item on the agenda is presentation from Stephanie Bell from the Downtown Business Association. Stephanie, the only thing we ask is you speak in the microphone.
All right. How close do I need to be? Thank you.
The microphone doesn't amplify it because you're.
All right, great. I'll talk loud as well. Thank you again. I'm Stephanie Bell. I'm the president of Downtown Jefferson City and I'm here to make a presentation, just a little bit of an economic update about downtown, but then also about some major events that are coming up. And you have a handout in front of you and I just wanna update you on the creation of the Economic Restructuring Committee and that's really from the National Main Street model and that's something we've been focusing on in 2013. And you can see, see a description of the Economic Restructuring Committee. We also call that kind of our retail and restaurants committee. But basically downtown focuses on the success of our businesses in order for our association to be successful. The economic health and vitality of the district as a whole and our member businesses are, is really important to us. And so we see ourselves as an economic development partner with the county because the better we do at our job, hopefully that's helping not only Jefferson City but the County of Cole. And I just provided a little bit of economic development data there. We've asked, we've been working on a CID project for a while with downtown and we asked the city for some data and three years ago when we were working on the project, they said the in-district taxable sales was approximately 13.2 million dollars. And when we asked them for that same district data this year, they said that's increased to 19 and a half million dollars. So as you can see downtown seen a significant increase. In addition, we really focused, after that committee came together, we focused on a holiday schedule of events and that went really well, we feel. Nationally retail sales were down 2.7 over the last year and the statistics for the Midwest is that the retail sales were flat. What's worse is foot traffic in brick and mortar stores declined by 14.6 percent. After we did, we did a holiday open house, we had Santa Claus in downtown, we had a number of different events trying to promote downtown. And after we did that whole program of events, we asked our businesses, you know, how'd it go? And over two-thirds of our businesses reported that their sales were up 10% or more in 2013, December 2013 over December 2012. We also had a recent pub crawl to promote our restaurants and businesses and half of the participants that night, February 8th, said that their sales were higher and the other half said their sales were substantially higher. So we're doing our best to put on these events as, from our perspective, hopefully to break even. But each event hopefully just brings that much more business into our city and our county. As you know, our major event is Thursday Night Live. And Thursday Night Live draws thousands of people into the city's core. We've got four Thursday Night Lives generally in June, sometimes five and one in September. And I was looking over some of the historical data on Thursday Night Live and I found a promotional piece that said in June 2009, Thursday Night Live brought 300 people in one night to downtown and we were so proud of that. We had worked really hard to get that many people at that final event. And as you know, the events increased substantially. On June 2013, the only hard count we have is how many wristbands and cups sell. So in June 2013, throughout that whole month, more than 6,000 people, approximately 1,500 people per week purchased the option to participate in the festival district. So that's not counting, you know, who went out and bought food or drinks or whatever. That's just the amount of cups and wristbands that were sold. So the actual estimate is that there's about 3,000 people per week, if not more, at that event. So. And as you know, Thursday Night Live benefits the whole community. We see a lot of benefits. First, it serves to showcase downtown businesses to new audiences. It highlights culinary, musical, artistic talents, all local talents. It provides free entertainment to a large group of people of all ages. And it also provides us a venue to cross-promote other community events and causes. We usually partner with United Way on some stuff and, and some other events and so it's helpful in that area. And then it just serves as a point of community pride. I think a lot of people enjoy the event and like to spread the word and bring their friends and out-of-town family to that event. As you know, while we provide the event generally to the community for free, it's not a free event for us. The event, just to put it on, in June, oh, approximately $30,000 in expenses. And luckily through support from other economic development partners and through support of our businesses, we're able to bring that money in, in either sponsorships, partnerships, or in wristband cup and ticket sales. So for example, the stage and production fees alone are about $2,000 per week. And we're happy to do that, but if we wanna make the event bigger and increase the event and provide more events, we're going to be needing additional funding. And for us, the next step, you know, it's kind of, we've grown from 300 to 3,000 a week and where do we go from here? And we really feel like Thursday Night Live is the event that we can market to out-of-town guests as making Jefferson City a destination for an entire weekend. And where we see the opportunity is in the fall weeks specifically with a lot of them at zoo games going on. We know we have a lot of out-of-town guests coming in and it would be wonderful if we could get them to come in on Thursday night, stay Friday night, and then go to the game on Saturday. So we're really maybe looking for the county to partner with us in helping us put on these additional events and see how they go. We really feel like we build this momentum all through the summer and into September and that we'd be able to sustain that momentum through the fall with additional support. And I think that's most of what's on my handout. I also provided you a list of events. I think there's 50 or more events that are happening throughout the year and you see those additional Thursday Night Lives there in highlighted in gray. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about Thursday Night Live.
Chris?
Um, so you're doing five events and roughly $30,000 is coming out of your budget or that's what you have budgeted for that? And then 30,000 comes from sale of wristbands and cups from the vendors or?
It's about half and half. I think last year about $15,000 came in from the sale of wristbands and cups and about 15,000 more came in from business partners and sponsorships.
And do the, do the people that set up outside booths down there, do they actually pay like a fee similar to Salute to America? Do they have to, for the space, do they have to put up?
For Thursday Night Live, we don't allow outside vendors. It's only, only people within the district or people adjacent to the district, basically to.
So they just set up an outside area where they can serve?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And they do pay, there's a TOC fee and some permitting fees through the city that they have to obtain to do that.
Pretty minimal or?
Mm-hmm. And then some, if you're a sponsor, then you are allowed to come in with some informational items and you have some other privileges as well.
Only other question I had is on your data here. So in the last three years, the city's taxable sales have grown over $6 million. I just.
In the downtown district.
In the downtown district?
Not sales tax, taxable sales.
Taxable sales.
Correct. And if you, if you think.
Seems awful large.
It, it does, I, I thought it seemed large too. Going back though, we've had a lot of new businesses open, specifically, I mean, one major business, Jay Phinney's. And so you think about how much sales goes through a restaurant business, those are some of your high drivers. Again, not of tax or profit, but of taxable sales. And so that would be a complete addition. Grand Cafe, Cork, those are all new in the last three years.
And as, I know this, there's a lot more foot traffic than there ever was before, particularly on weekends. I mean, if you come downtown on a Saturday morning to get coffee, you're lucky to find a place to park because it's full of people shopping and I think it's to be applauded at seeing that grow.
I think that's great. I mean, I think Thursday Night Live is great for the people that come out and see it. Some of your suggested dates, I'm a little iffy on those just because maybe they might not be consecutive dates and would that kinda get lost and, you know, are we having it, are we not having it, you know, kinda that philosophy?
And we brainstormed about that and the way, we wanted to really coincide with especially Mizzou and Georgia. And we are already doing the first September in, or the first Thursday in September. So how this would work, it would essentially be the first two Thursdays in September and October. And we thought with that setup, we'd be able to promote it in a way that makes sense to people without burning them out. We know it's school time and so we know people don't always have the availability they do at June.
Plus the homecoming parade is on one of the Thursdays in September, which kinda, I guess precludes putting the stage and blocking the streets off when the break comes through.
So if we, if we were to go forward, Stephanie, I mean, what kind of dollar value are you looking for?
I think our request is for approximately $10,000. And that would help us cover some of those hard costs that we have. I mean, we can't get away from the stage and production. They're already cutting us a good rate since it's a community event and we do, we're in a long-term contract with them. And with that amount, and we do contract with someone for the, some of the event services and that's because we're an all-volunteer organization and something like this, just like Salute and some of the other bigger events, takes quite a bit of work. But we think with that additional funding, we'd be able to go out and solicit additional community partners and sponsorships. And perhaps, I mean, you know, there's a lot of room to expand. We would wanna provide additional dates. There's also the thought of, you know, the bigger the music act you can get, which is also a considerable expense, the bigger draw you can get. And so we always try to end the season with a bigger name to try to draw even more people downtown.
Okay. What's the overall consensus of the downtown businesses with Thursday Night Live? Are they pretty happy with it? Do they see an increase in sales? Is it pretty good for their business?
Yes, we've had very good participation. The businesses get together regularly. This is one thing they're really excited about. And they are excited about the possibility of expanding it. Even for the retail businesses who might, might not get the additional sales that evening, the visibility of their business on that evening, they feel like is a, is a positive.
The, is the September event, is it typically bigger than the, than the June events just because of maybe people going to the lake or the river? Have you seen any difference there?
I would say it's kind of an average maybe of what you see in June. And the advantage with June is you start in early June and it's kinda small and then it just builds up. And that last night, the beach night's the biggest night, which is why I think an expanded program in September, you'd be able to capitalize on that momentum with the additional dates. So that first weekend's a big weekend because it's our arts live weekend. So we'll have the art stroll, we'll have Thursday Night Live, an art stroll on Friday, and then Jazz Fest is that Saturday. And so it is a big event and they do the soup stock that week, but we hope to use that momentum from that event and say, hey, come on back next weekend.
Yeah, one more question and then I'll quit asking questions, but, and this might not be a question for you, but it seems like on big Mizzou weekends that our hotels are full as well. And so there's a whole lot more people in the, in our community on those weekends. And so, I mean, I could see we're trying to tie in the Mizzou football games would be very advantageous and give those people, maybe, maybe even bring those people to Jeff City versus Columbia and, hey, we can, you know, we can tie into Thursday Night Live and go to the football game on, on Saturday as well. So I think it might be really good, so.
I mean, I know that last, two years, actually, two years ago, the first year when Georgia was in town, hotels were sold out in Jefferson City, they were sold out as far as the lake to go to that game. The problem was everybody who came in went straight to Columbia. It was, and by having something here, you know, I think maybe we can keep them here on a Thursday night, maybe keep them here for dinner on a Friday night, and maybe if the game's an early game, maybe get them to come back here on a Saturday afterwards because, you know, obviously I'm in school in Mizzou, going out to the bars or restaurants after a Mizzou football game is not a easy, convenient experience. Down here it would be a great place to come out.
More of a college thing versus an adult thing where, I agree.
And more of a family atmosphere that you bring folks down here and be able to have a little more relaxed walking experience than walking around with 30,000 college students.
Jeff?
Jeff?
I'm just kinda wondering, the people downtown, do they got, what kinda skin they got in the game, they're the ones benefiting from it. So where do we stop then from Thursday Night Live? We've got Sidewalk Silly Sales, Piccadilly, Capitol Lawn Movie, there's a whole bunch of events. When we gonna draw the line to throwing money at the stuff downtown? We're gonna open a can of arms, so.
Right. Well, I would just say that this is the one major, besides Salute to America, this is the one major community event that downtown provides, you know, and tries to provide for free, not only for our youth, but for our adults and families. And none of the other events are really, I would say, I mean, the movies and those kinds of things are open to everybody, but none are really what I would consider a community event and an economic driver to the county's core. And I think this is the type of event that, you know, it does bring in people from out of town and it drives up a lot of business in downtown, so.
Yeah, I agree. It's, I've been down here before and when you have the motorcycle night and stuff, it's, it's a huge event. Just wondering what our role in it, throwing money at it is. It's the same as Salute America, we run into this same thing, so. I don't know if I'm willing to throw 10 at it. We throw five to the salute as a economic development and to promote the area and as an event for the community. I mean, there's a lot of people in the county that enjoy the event.
And I think that downtown district is something we're seeing growing and we should foster it. I think Thursday Night Live's a little different than Salute. One of the big things about Salute, I mean, it's a very short time period. It's not a recurring event. It happens for two days, two and a half days, give or take. And the number of out-of-town vendors are amazing when you think about it. Food carts that come in, so many out-of-town folks that.
We should have in-town folks doing that.
We should, but, you know, this is, I mean, I think the beauty of Thursday Night Live is it's, you know, it's only in-town folks, it's only the downtown court paying for it. We're part of the downtown court, we are.
Right, I agree.
Part of this court. And, you know, when we went through the budget and approved it, we approved 10,000 for the business associations and 10,000 for Thursday Night Live. And I think, you know, coming here only asking for half is a good, good sign. And I think it really generates traffic in a time period that leads up to the holiday sales too, which is another driver for the downtown. Seeing growth in the downtown retail core does two things. One, brings in revenue, if I'm getting it wrong. Second thing it does is generates more people wanting to come downtown, which means more businesses downtown, more residents downtown continues to grow, the business structure and climate down. I think that's good for all of us.
And the downtown business owners do have skin in the game for, on Thursday Night Live, they're required to pay a fee to even participate to be able to sell their wristbands and cups. And so they are part of that business support that generates revenue to cover the event expenses. And we've increased that as the event gets bigger and we realize they're doing better off of the event, we've increased their fees to participate.
And I think, you know, another option too is to look at it, let's, let's do it this year and see how it turns out. If those three events turn out to not be all that successful, then we know, you know, we don't wanna necessarily look at them again. If they turn out to be wildly successful, then we've made an investment that helps pay off.
You said asking for half the amount.
Yeah. We approved 10 and 10 in the budget.
10 for who?
10 for the association and 10 for Thursday Night Live.
Oh, you got that one.
I got the one we voted on.
We, we set all those monies aside.
We just set them aside. I mean, they are appropriated and I think the fact that, you know, we're not spending all of it.
And I will say, just for community benefit, one aspect we are looking at because we do know our businesses are so busy and so full at that time, one thing I love to see is get the trolley going from that Central East Side District. And we've talked to them a little bit about that, so people can go down and enjoy dinner at Prison Brew's at the Mission, you know, and do that kinda thing, and then ride a trolley down to the district and then come back. And so, you know, we've even just thought about that as the South Side kinda brings, gets up to and going, doing the same thing. And that way you just expand the reach of that event. Because I think a lot of people might wanna come down, enjoy a quiet dinner over at O'Donohue's, come down for the live music and then go back. And I think that's another way we're hoping to just expand the economic reach of the event.
I would say that we, we have to try new things to grow and, you know, Prison Brew's area, the Ice Street area, the South Side, I mean, these kinda things I think help our community, give a sense of community and, and I think we need to do these things in order to, to help grow our community and get more people involved here and see what, what our community is like and, and, you know, maybe they'll wanna come live here someday if they, they're from out of town, so. I'm for appropriating the $10,000.
Jeff?
I still struggle with it under our general public welfare stuff. It's not the same as our Able Learning Center, Maker Services, or, or providing a, we're contracting them to provide services to help those who are under-provided. So I'm not, and I had trouble with the Salute America and I was even on the committee. And so, you know, still, we already had that one in there, so I didn't pull that much.
I think general welfare looks at two sides. One is providing for those that have a need. You could also, economic development benefits the general welfare.
If we're gonna do it as economic development, then let's call it that instead of taking it out there.
I think that's just the fund level. I think that's the fund designation you just stuck this, these things in. I don't think.
If it's just semantics.
I think it is semantics. All right, then I'd entertain, I have a contract here for $10,000 at Downtown Jefferson City to provide three additional Thursday Night Live events. Do we wanna go ahead and commit in the contract for these three dates?
I'd contract 5,000.
Okay.
I'm, I'm pretty much limited on that. See how it goes the first year.
But I would support the full 10,000.
Same with Salute. I'm only gonna be good for five on that one.
Do we wanna lock in these dates? Or do you wanna leave that at their discretion?
I would, I would leave that at their discretion. I, I would suggest that, I like at least two of those dates, but I understand the logistics of that too, so. So I, I would, I would support the 10,000, so I'll move that, that.
Pre-agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to pre-agreement, second. I'll second the motion.
It's for the full 10, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Call roll, please, Bill.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Jeff?
No.
Two in one vote? Contract is.
Same starting out, good, already lost some.
And this was even your east side.
Stephanie, thank you for coming.
Everybody hear that bus come running through? Hey, I tried to help, I'm just limited and I have other reasons why not to.
I understand. I read the article on the paper on Sunday too.
No, I was this way when I first came up here, wasn't I? I said the same thing first time.
Next item on the agenda is presentation from the Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau. Chris, welcome. I'm gonna ask you to come up front all sculpture, if you don't mind.
The door is ajar. Who else wants to run?
Thanks, Stephanie.
My understanding, Dick's not gonna be here, Perk?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Chris, you talk to him, you wanna postpone it or you wanna go ahead and vote on it today?
We're gonna vote it.
We are gonna vote it?
Yes.
Does it know how that one's gonna turn out?
I don't know, because I didn't, I wasn't in that conversation, so I'll be curious to hear if there is a conversation.
Chris, how you doing?
Welcome, you're on. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you all today. My name is Chris Wilson and I am the Sports Sales Manager for the Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau. And it's our goal and mission at the Convention and Visitors Bureau to market Jefferson City as a tourist destination and maximize dollars and bring people in and, and things along those lines to fill our restaurants and our hotels. And also, Chris, you talked about this earlier, it can also be a recruiting tool to bring new eyes and ears to Jefferson City and, and look at ways to bring new people into the community. So with that being said, one of the, when I first started, one of the, the main things I kept hearing about in, in the sports market were traveling car shows, traveling car shows and traveling motorcycle shows. And with, with Jefferson City's central location and value pricing and things along those lines, how that could be a, a perfect, perfect fit for our community. And, you know, the one that kept coming up over and over again was the, the Hot Rod Power Tour, which is one of the premier traveling shows in, in the country. When you're talking about a, long riders that you're talking about anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000, long riders that, that go on this Hot Rod Power Tour. To give you a little information on that, the Hot Rod Power Tour is a, a seven-day event typically in early June. Seven days and sever, seven different visits to communities where they stay overnight and visit our restaurants and visit our communities and kinda have a celebration as they're, as they're part of this, this journey. And of course, another part of that was the, was the motorcycle side of it and I'll come back to that in a second. But it was something that we were very interested in and saw the value in. And we were able to talk, the Hot Rod Magazine puts on these promotional events and we were able to talk the promotion event guy, his name's Michael Moore, he's from Indianapolis, Indiana, to make a trip to Jefferson City to show him what we had to offer as far as the destination to see if it would be a good fit for the Hot Rod Power Tour and the Hot Bike Power Tour. He came in in, in late October and we used several different elements of the city in Cole County as part of our presentation. The Missouri State Penitentiary was part of that and I'll come back to that in a second. The, the downtown Jefferson City, the Jefferson City Fairgrounds and the Jefferson City Capitol Mall were all involved in that, in that presentation. So anyway, we, we thought that the, the site visit went well and he said he'd give us about two to three weeks to get back to us and let it, let us, let us know his decision. And we were, we were hoping for one of the two, either the Hot Bike Power Tour, which is a new event, or the Hot Rod Power Tour, which is beginning its 20th year. The Hot Bike Power Tour brings in about 500 to 800 motorcycles and they, basically the same concept where they stay overnight and enjoy your community. So about three weeks passed and, and he sent us a follow-up email that he would like to offer both, both events to, to Jefferson City and Cole County, the, the Hot Bike Power Tour as well as the Hot Rod Power Tour. So we were extremely excited about that. To give you some of the dates that we were looking at, and this was part of it too, that we were excited about, for the Hot Bike Power Tour, scheduled for Sunday, August 17th. And from a hotel perspective, they were extremely excited about that particular date because typically August can be a, a slower time and then specifically on a Sunday night can be a slower time as well. So from a, a hotel occupancy perspective, they were very, very excited about that. And then for the, the Hot Rod Power Tour, we're looking at June 8th or 9th, which is a Monday or Tuesday of 2015, as far as dates. And once again, you know, for an event of this size, we always look at the date structure and we don't wanna compete against any other already established events when, when you're talking about bringing a new event in that will, they'll have, will they'll conflict with each other. So with that being said, we, we were offered both, we were very excited. We have decided to move forward with both events. We are, the CVB of course is committed to it. We are, we are speaking with the city as well as other potential sponsorships and, and we just wanted to take this time this morning to see if, if the, the county would have any interest in, in being a potential sponsor with this as well and, and we understand so. with this as well. And, and we understand certainly where, where you guys are at and different things along those lines. I will say that, tell you that the Hot Bike Power Tour costs 5,000 to bring in, and the Hot Rod Power Tour costs 20,000 to bring in. Like I said, we are committed to both of these numbers. We've already started the fundraising, reaching out, committing some of our dollars to that. But it was just from, from our perspective and, and our mission on what this could lead to, it, it was just too good of an opportunity to pass up for, for Jefferson City moving forward. You know, you, you have in your hands there some of the, the economic numbers of both of these. And, and another thing too are the residual effects of bringing in something like this. You know, a lot of times, when, when these guests come into a city and, and are oppressed with the city, they'll come back and visit again, which, which is an important part of it. Just from a marketing perspective, there's all kinds of marketing of Jefferson City that will be involved in this. I've been invited to the other tour stops to market Jefferson City along the way too. So it, there's a, a lot of good things that are going to come out of these particular traveling car and bike shows, and I think we'll feel the effect of these for many years to come. Once again, a recruiting tool for potential new residents and the, if things go well, the ability to host something like this again in the future. So, you know, with, with that being said, that's, that's just kind of some background of what we're looking at. And, and we've tried to take different elements of, of Jefferson City and, and combine them. The, the Hot Rod Power Tour will be in the Downtown Jefferson City area and will include a mega tour of the Missouri State Penitentiary. So we're getting eyes and ears to the penitentiary and the importance of that for this community for the long haul. And then for the Hot Rod Power Tour, the show itself will be at the, the Capitol Mall with the Jefferson City Fairgrounds as a potential backup. And then for their after-event kind of get together, that'll also be downtown, and there will also be a mega tour available to them at the Missouri State Penitentiary. So, we're, we're moving forward and, and we just, just wanted to come in this morning to see if the, the county would have any, any interest in being a potential sponsor. And, and we would be looking at a number of anywhere from three to 5,000 combined for, for both of these. We would, we would be thrilled, or, or anything at all. So, with, with that said, appreciate your time this morning, and I'll open it up to you all for questions.
So I got a clarification.
Sure.
The bike tour is this year?
This year, yes, correct, this year.
The hot rod?
Would be 2015, absolutely. Yeah, the hot bike will be on a Sunday night of this year in August. And the, the hot rod, which is, is the big one, will be in either a Monday or Tuesday, June 8th or 9th of 2015.
Okay. And the hot bike is 5,000?
Correct.
And the total cost?
And the total cost on the hot rod is 20,000.
How much have you all raised for the hot bike tour so far?
For the hot bike tour, we're around 2,500 at this point.
All right.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Those are my questions. Chris?
The hot bike was five or 10, you said?
The hot bike was five.
Yeah.
Hot rod is, is 20.
So we're basically just looking at the hot bike tour?
In this one?
Yes, yeah. And how many people do you think it'll, it'll draw the hot bike tour?
Hot bike, according to their numbers, and that's a newer event for them, but they participate anywhere from 500 to 800 people coming in. And then, well, if we're going to, yeah, concentrate on that one, yeah, 500, 800.
That's just motorcycles, or is that's just total people?
That, that is total people, anywhere from 500 to 800.
How many motorcycles?
Um, that could be, you know, anywhere from, I mean, they, they kind of predict around the same numbers.
So when they talk about five, 800 people coming in, that's out of town people coming in?
Correct.
That's not your local people walking up the same bikes?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Now-
Very similar concept to the Hot Rod Power Tour, but instead of the hot rods, which can encompass really any type of vehicle besides a rental car. And same things with the motorcycle. This can be any type of motorcycle that can be part of this, this journey. They look at about five, you know, 500 to 800, and then they kind of say 500 room nights is, is the numbers they were giving. But this, this is in their second or third year of this event.
Right. This is just more or less bringing the bikes in and showing off the bikes? There's, is there any activities with the bikes or?
The, the thing we, we kind of set out in our proposal, and that's a good question, is it would be kind of similar to if the motorcycles came in and kind of shut down a couple blocks of downtown, where they'd be able to, to hang out and show off their bikes and do some different things. And there's actually an after-party at one of the bars that we're working on. Another thing I'd like to point out too is, is several of your restaurants or bars are closed on Sunday in Jefferson City. So one of the things we're working on is letting them know about that, to see if they want to be open and draw more business and get a bigger piece of pie spread out. And, and then part of that proposal too, why they're, why they're doing their thing downtown is to offer them mega tours over at the, the Missouri State Penitentiary too, and, and let them experience that.
That's all I got.
Jeff? Do I have any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
If you all want to take action on this, do we have a contract?
We got this request after the budget too, so we didn't have anything in it for that.
We're fine.
And it's along the same lines as the downtown thing, so I'll tell you where I'm at with it.
So, correct, yep.
No offense.
No, I, I understand, I understand.
I mean, it's an opportunity, once again, to bring in folks, give us some exposure. More people we bring into the downtown core, better off we are. More people we bring into our community, the better off we are. Since most of the money's already been raised, I mean, I think anything we would contribute would be a pretty minimal amount. It's not as if we're having to start this thing up from scratch. We do have, we do have funds that we've-
So where are the hotels at on this? We got sponsorships from them. They're the ones that are going to be filling their rooms up. I'm just saying.
Sure, sure. No, no, no potential sponsorship. I mean, obviously they're part of the process and, and they're-
Because if they're going to have 500 rooms filled up and-
They're going to be-
Or 500 people.
Mm-hmm. They're going to be, of course, benefiting from it as well, so, yeah.
Well, I'll say what I said earlier, and that I'm all for trying new things, and I think we try this once, and if it doesn't work out, we don't do the, the hot rod thing next year. And, so I'd move to spend $2,500 for the hot bike power tour.
Motion is there second? I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Can we put it under economic development? I don't know if it's going to change my vote, but I'm-
I mean, I think that's what it is. It is economic development. I think the-
Is that where we're putting it in the budget at then?
I mean, we'll have to make it, since it's not already approved, we'll have to make a-
Transfer.
A transfer into that, wherever we start with from. I'm fine with designated as economic development.
That'd be something we will have to look at for next year, but not the startup for this year.
Well, and you know, one of the advantages, I think, of doing the hot bike tour with a relatively small amount is we'll get a chance to see how this thing operates. We'll see what, how good or bad. You don't know it is. And next year's budget, you know, you potentially have the hot rod tour coming, which is a much bigger event, and then you can have a little bit of experience before you see what the next option is. So I have no problem with designating it under economic development, either Chris.
I don't either.
I'm still not voting for it this year.
So we just do it for you there?
I was just asking if, because we didn't do the last one out of that, so.
Well, that's because we had already put it in a different line.
Not that I'm going to be argumentative. I'm not like that.
I have a motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing nuns, we do not have a contract. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
By two to one vote, we'll move forward on it. If you give us a contract, we'll have to take that up and vote it, but that must be a separate vote. Okay?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much, Chris. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks for your time.
Go over the event.
Appreciate it.
It's election year. Y'all talk some politicians help sponsor it.
So the next item on the agenda is the presentation from the Historical Society? Yes? No? Maybe?
The Cole County-
Yes, the Cole County Historical Society.
All of the other ones you hear.
Yeah, that's, that's a different historical group.
All right.
Don't think we're here for her, huh?
Hi, Lorraine. How are you?
Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks for coming.
I want to give you just a couple of little things to look at. This was our budget.
Okay.
And also, our proposed budget for the coming year. Now, believe it or not, I came in 1958, so I feel like I belong in the Historical Society. I basically can be the mother of all these young-
Same, same document.
Or grandmother, maybe.
Yeah, I'm only 18.
I beg your pardon.
Same document?
Yes.
Okay.
It certainly is. How many of you in this room have been to the Cole County Historical Society? That's amazing. But you know, it's not as amazing as when I found out that history is not being taught basically a lot in our schools. It's taught, but it's taught in a different vein than what we had. So Cole County has one of the best museums, and I have gone around the state. We are the only ones that have the inaugural ball gowns. And believe it or not, the ladies, even some of the men, love the ball gowns. We were very fortunate this year.
What about Pete? Does Pete like the ball gowns? Does Pete like the ball gowns?
Pete was coming with me this morning, and then he decided the only thing he's done for us is be a bartender, so no. But he is my, he's my guest bartender, and he does that, and I love it. Anyway, when I took over two years ago, and I am no longer president, I am now a past president.
Greatest job in the world, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's a great feeling. We had about 900 and some dollars in the general fund. $900 in a general fund, when our expenditures for the year usually run in the 30s. That was not very much money. We did have money in what's called the ornament fund. How many of you have bought ornaments? You know, we have our famous ornaments, and they love them. And that really is one of our mainstays. But I decided, I'm a worker, I'm going to get a board that will work. So we started fundraisers. I had an activity every month for the last two years. Some of them were free, because we have to offer free things to our members. We have a lecture series. That is a freebie. But we were able to do fundraisers. Some of you may have gone on our bus trips. Gosh, they were fun. And I started that when Susan Carr was our sec, our president, because we needed money. We need lifelines, and that's why I'm here. I need my lifeline. They, basically, the commission has been very generous with us, and they have given us a certain amount of money under contract. And without this money, as you can see, even working with something every single month, we could not make it. It would be very, very difficult. The buildings are old. Anyone have any idea how old they are? These row houses are very unique. They're the only ones, I think, in Jeff City. And they were built the same time the mansion was built, and that was 1871. Now, I'm not quite that old, but that's getting old. The plaster's getting old. Lots of things need to be repaired. We had a window blow out of the room where we store our gowns in the upstairs of two, of our second building. This was a traumatic thing. Had someone been down in the courtyard, they could have seriously been injured. And do you know how long it took us to get that window in, because we go by people donating things for us? It took six months. Now, that's terrible. We had to have the plastic over it. That's a climate-controlled room, and we had to move all of those gowns, because they're very fragile, some of them are so fragile, into another climate-controlled area. This last summer, we had an air conditioner go out in the Upsholty House, as you know, which sits right in back of the Historical Society. Our whole basement must be climate-controlled because we hold all of the film of the old, old photos that we have. Now, we're putting them on the computer, which is going to be great. We were very fortunate at, at our annual dinner, Randy Wright finally signed over all of Zeal's photos to us. We have all of that now. We have a library of photos that you guys would not believe, that if you come down and need something, we can find it for you. But getting back to what I need from you guys, I need you to continue this contract, because you're my, you're my bloodline. You know, you're one of them. You're in my budget. And, you know, we did pretty well. We, we worked hard. We rented the courtyard, which is neat, but not a lot of people use a small area like that. So we had $750 from that, which is pretty good. And two years ago, I decided, hey, we need to be sort of patriotic. We do nothing that's actually patriotic. So we decided to start remembering 9/11. For two years, we've held the 9/11 program, and last year it was bigger than the first year. And I hope they will continue. You know, you don't know what's going to go on with the new administration, do you? But anyway, we made $1,100 on that. We made $2,500 on our fashion show, and it was lovely. We have a great fashion show. And Judy Howard, of course, helps us a lot up here from Saffy's. It's local. Everything is local. Any of you ladies that want tickets, I have them with me today. If you guys want them for your wives, I'd be glad to sell them to you while I'm here, because we need money. And, and we did make that much on that. We had a bus tour that we made just $1,000 on. It was a two-day tour, big mistake. We should not have done that. You know, most ladies don't want to go overnight. I don't go overnight anywhere unless Pico's with me. So, I don't know. That was not as successful. Then, of all things, we had a chicken dinner at the Eagles Club. And you should have seen some of the members. I mean, they were horrified. You're going to have a chicken dinner? We've never had a chicken dinner in our life. And I said, well, let's try it. They ran out of chicken. I understand, and everything else. So it was a great success. That was our biggest moneymaker. And after everything was paid, we made $2,600 for it. So we've worked hard, ladies and gentlemen. We had a reception for Carolyn Bond. I don't know if you remember Kit Bond when he was president here, I mean, governor here. But Kit grew up in the same town with my husband, so we have sort of known the family. And Carolyn decided that the state owed her this portrait that was painted for her, but the state claimed it. So in negotiations, we were able to get a loan from the state of this lovely portrait. Now, I don't know how many of you have been there, how many of you have seen it, but we had this nice reception. Carolyn then came that day, and we have the dress that's in the portrait. She thought about this a little bit before she came and said, I'm going to give you 10 other outfits. We now have, and ladies and gentlemen, this is a big thing to protect these things. We have 10 outfits plus the inaugural ball gowns. So it's worth coming to see when we put that on display again. Do you have any questions for me? I just can ramble forever, you know? I love this thing, and I can talk to you about it and get you all to come and buy a chicken dinner ticket and buy a fashion show ticket, whatever you want.
Yeah, I think the Historical Society offers a great value to our community.
But we really need your help.
And it's, we're, a lot of places have historical museums. I think ours is much better than anybody else's. I mean, it competes with major museums and some of what our collection is. So I think it's a great job. It's a great asset to the community.
I would agree. I don't have any questions.
Nope, I'm good with it.
Do we have a contract? I entertain motion to approve the contract with the Historical Society for $7,000.
$7,000. Unless you want to give us more.
So moved.
I'd take more. I've heard, I've heard him ask you for all kinds of money that I really think does not necessarily have a lot to do with the county.
No, already, all mine was. When I came in, I didn't change it. I bet it's sad.
If you want to give us a bonus, that's fine.
Yeah, next year, yes, if you want to make it.
I have a motion to second. Call roll please, Betty.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
A roll call though. The contract for the Historical Society is approved. Lorraine, thank you so much for coming in.
You're very welcome.
And it's a great job you did it.
And if you want tickets for our fashion show, just stop right there.
Okay.
I think Chris should be in it.
Think I look good in one of them dresses?
She's standing this.
You look pretty good in high heels.
Keep Pete out of trouble.
Hey, good luck on the, the rest of them, too.
Alright. Presentation from Cole County Volunteer Medical First Responder Squad. Kevin?
I have a copy of nothing.
It's attached to your check.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. I have it electronic.
You want paper, come on.
Which one is it?
It's attached to you.
The budget?
Presentation from Cole County Volunteer.
Under the contract.
It's under the contract.
Shove the little bit of green.
Nope. Must be the other one.
No paper, Kevin.
It's just two documents.
The agreement?
They're in separately.
There we go, got it.
Budget?
As you know, we are a, we are a all-volunteer organization. We handle assist medical calls outside of the Jefferson's limits inside of Cole County. As you can see, changes from last year, we have a big increase in insurance, which we have just dialed down of our equipment request down at the bottom. I think that kind of explains itself. If you guys have any questions about that, I'm more than happy to answer.
No, I think the ser, I mean, the service you all render outside the same limits is invaluable, and we appreciate what you guys do.
I think we had about two thousand calls last year.
There is not a better first responder system, particularly from a volunteer basis, that I'm aware of anywhere. So thank you all for what you guys do, and we're glad to have you as a partner.
I agree. No.
Is that what we had budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to remember.
Jeff, you have any questions?
No, sir.
I entertain a motion to approve the agreement with the Cole County Volunteer Medical First Responder Squad. That's a lot of words and a really long acronym.
Yeah.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve the contract. Call roll, please, Betty.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
A roll call vote. Contract's approved. Thank you again very, very much, Kevin. Appreciate what you guys do, and I'm sure Mike would give an amen to that.
And a short presentation.
Okay, Dick's not going to be here, so we'll come back to that later. Next item is Amorusco presentation. Gerard, thank you. Sorry.
Welcome back.
Sorry it has been a long agenda, but we're getting lots of business done, so.
Been very interesting.
Do you all have a copy of the contract?
Uh, yes.
See, y'all do have a copy.
We do have a copy of the contract.
Scott, do you?
It's a long, in-depth contract.
Well, I'd like to be, you know, precise. Well, I mean, you all have, what about plans? Do you have a picture of our blueprints and such? I brought your copies.
Is that attached here, too, Jeff?
Yeah, there's four attached.
Which one is the plan? The facility or the brochure?
I'll open facility.
This one right here. Would you like a copy?
Got it.
Got it. No, we have it.
Just that, they've got all sorts of different names of files, so you have to figure out which file is what.
Well, I brought the whole thing here. We've got the scope here, as well as the.
You've got the whole nine yards?
So if you need any hard copies.
Okay. I think I'd take a hard copy of the plans.
Sure.
It's hard to look at on a computer.
You know what? I just gave a lot.
I mean, that, that actually is hard to look at on the computer in my book. You've got to move it up and down and around.
If you got a copy, I'll take one.
That's just the architectural part. Is it? Oh, man. Oh, you know what? You know what? I apologize. These are all the different, I only made one copy, I apologize.
Which one is the?
But they're different ones, like plumbing, and there's mechanical.
I'm fine with this, too. I've got questions, I'll look over on Mark's.
Mark, sorry for the confusion. He's got a full set. Greg's got a full set.
I just wanted to get a look at it and see which one we're talking about. Okay, I got it. Here you go. I, I know, now I understand where we're at. Okay. Well, um.
Basically, we're just backed-up date.
Which I saw is 1.187?
Yep.
Okay. And that's done and finished and?
It does not include the demolition of the shed. Just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Just inside, you should come in through the garage doors there.
Our storage?
Yeah, that's your file storage.
Doesn't include the demolition on that.
Yeah. This is a scope. We discussed it as far as you all self-performing instead of us putting a number on it. I mean, we're happy to, to do that as well, you know?
It's all basically brand-new lumber. I would think that somebody would probably want that because we're going to tear it up and throw it dumpster.
We built new shelves, but that is, we didn't build the outside space.
Yeah, the outside space, just, the shell of it's nothing, yeah. It's old. But the shelving insides are relatively new.
Yeah. Yeah, we're happy to tear it down for you. We didn't have it included in the, in the cost there, but it's relative to minor fees.
What were some of the other things that you guys excluded?
The removal and relocation of the wooden shelving inside the, the front cooler, that's excluded.
Yeah, that's your major file storage currently. I'm not sure, that's all county records there.
Um, we didn't have any water service to the, to the Bay Area. Is that correct?
We're bringing new water, sewer, and power.
To the space itself.
To the space. It's all going to be on its own.
I know one of the other things is you, you weren't finishing the, the Bay Area side of the wall?
We weren't?
We, which wall are you speaking of?
The Bay Area, the area where the, the ambulances would be parked.
Actually, we've got a demising wall made out of plywood that we'll separate Bill from, from Mike, their area there.
Um, well.
And then.
The, your plans or something showed that you're only finishing one side.
I think we have drywall on the EMS side, right?
On the interior side.
Yeah.
But drywall on the exterior is at plywood for the.
So we are finishing both sides.
Well, the inside will be drywall, the outside will be plywood. We want plywood because if there's ever, you know, something bumping into it or whatever, it'll be a little easier to, to fix as opposed to patch and drywall. But the interior of it is.
Because that wall's like six inches thick, it's got that expanded polystyrene insulation.
And what about electrical in the, I call it the Bay Area, the, the area where the ambulances will be for external power?
Yeah, we do have hookups for, because the ambulances all get plugged.
Yes.
GPS and laptops, so we've got power for that.
So is that overhead power or how, just cords run along the, the ground or?
Yeah, basically, we'll have cords around the ground. Oh, I apologize. Yeah, we'll have cords and plugs for all the, the vehicles there on that outside wall. We can take a look at, at putting drops in there, too. So that shouldn't be too big of an issue.
Fuel source for the generator?
Propane. And you guys will contract with your local propane provider.
So we supply the tank?
Yeah. And the propane provider will provide the concrete pad for it to sit on. It's normally just a little precast pad. And they take care of piping all the way to the unit itself.
Okay. Any, any drainage in the Bay Area for excess water?
No, we do not have drainage in there. That'll have to be squeegeed. And, and again, that was a budgetary consideration because there's a lot of saw cut and drainage and that has to be put in there, all the graded drains, concrete refinishing. It's a pretty substantial amount.
In light of our new master facilities plan, I'm not willing to move forward on this yet.
Jeff?
I think part of it comes down to the cost. It just, it seems pretty high to remodel that. I haven't done the numbers, see what it is per foot. And that's no FFNE there either, is it? That's just some walls and stuff that, I don't know.
I think we fell right in where we were before, and I want to say that we were at a hundred forty-seven dollars a foot for the space.
Okay, and there may be more square foot than I think I'm looking at, too.
How many square feet is it?
Maybe we'll go out there and relook at that.
I don't have those numbers at my fingertips. I'm going through memory from last time we were out here.
Trying to look at the drawing to see if it doesn't have any dimension.
Yeah, there are no dimensions on the drawing itself.
The drawing also doesn't show. We're doing a lot of flat work out front where.
Yeah, we've got the apron.
We're, we're grating out that, that hill.
Where the second and third bay would be?
We're putting in three new doors.
I've got a question about that apron, too. Not interrupted, but Carrie and I, I've got a question about that. Looking at the plan, it only goes out fifty feet and not all the way to the street? Is that right?
That is correct. There's your retaining wall that comes in.
And you can see there fifty feet, and then you would see a retaining wall as you pull out of the ambulance thing?
Yes.
I'm not sure if fifty feet is going to be, if you're in that furthest third bay and you've got two trucks that are sitting outside of the bay that sometimes happens, you know, you have trucks sitting out on the apron, you come out that third bay, trying to make that left turn to follow the retaining wall and get the exit ramp. I'm not sure that fifty foot is going to be enough room to navigate that for that third bay. It was my assumption that that tarmac was going to go all the way to the street, like it is now on that first bay. And I'll, I'll defer back to you and the commission on that, but that fifty foot's going to be extremely tight when you come out of that bay there.
Yeah, that wasn't.
I thought we had all, I mean.
From previous discussion.
I say, I thought you guys had all worked out all the design specifications on all these things. I mean.
Yeah, the fifty foot is what we planned on from originally. We can, we can absolutely alter it if you like. So there's, you know, that can be.
Well, that's going to be a significant alteration, too, to take that all the way out to the street.
That concrete flatwork is expensive.
How much does that run generally?
I.
Not, not comfortable giving an estimate?
I mean, it's got to be, you know.
I would need to take a look at it further.
It's got to be thick to support the, you know, the weight of the vehicles.
Yeah, we've got eight-inch concrete, two layers of rebar, expansion joints.
So I, I mean, we, we may have to relook at it as far as maybe taking more exact measurements, maybe even, you know, even measuring, you know, turn radius of ambulance and so forth, but, you know.
Well, I can, you know, based upon what Mike's saying here, you know, we can blow out that wall and just extend it out to the street itself. So, I mean, it's, but we'll, I, I definitely would like the opportunity to, to look at that again and get you correct pricing rather than me guessing at what it might, what it might run.
I mean, that's potentially a pretty significant, I mean, that's a lot of feet. I mean, I'm trying to just remember. It seems like that's a lot of feet and a lot of flatwork, so.
Well, you can imagine, you, you probably know what it cost to, or a concrete pad for a driveway.
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-five. I think we'd have to get a, I mean, I think we need to just get your estimate on what that is.
Now, the walls inside, the interior walls, how's that finished? You're going up, were we just going up eight or ten foot?
We're going up about ten feet. About ten feet up, and we'll have lay-in two-by-four ceilings within the space itself.
Will, will we be able to utilize the space above it for storage or anything?
No.
Because those are tall ceilings.
No, it's, it's going to be just a lay-in ceiling here, like you have here. We made no provisions for an additional story above.
To, and, and we, we actually kicked that around a couple meetings ago. In order to make it load-bearing, it would, it would increase the cost substantially as opposed to just having it open above. I think one of our original budgets was actually a two-story.
In that space with living quarters above and office below. But that one came in.
We're just trying to keep them all on the same level as the purpose of this. But it's just, we got all that above there, just seems like a waste to not do something with it, so.
Here.
I'm trying to remember what we looked at whenever we were first talking about it. And then I didn't remember doing a two-level there.
Yeah, we had come back with a two-level, and we were north of two million dollars.
Yeah. The second level thing's very expensive, if you recall that.
Yeah.
All poured concrete.
Bar joints, construction.
On the same footprint that we have on this?
Yes.
We was doing that?
Essentially.
Okay, well, I could see that being two million.
It's a big footprint.
Yeah. Yeah, because we had, at one point, we were at thirteen, I forget how many square feet, thirteen thousand?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. It was a lot of square footage.
Which means this is probably seven thousand square feet, give or take.
Uh, give or take, yeah, with the base.
The living quarters?
Not the.
You got five.
No, that included the bays, didn't it?
Um, yeah.
We're going to have another twenty-five.
Well, here, there's a, there's a rough number on here. There's fifty-five by.
How long is that retaining wall? That's a fifty-foot.
I'd say it's probably sixty.
It's about fifty feet, give or take.
It's probably seventy. So you got thirty-five.
So you're a hundred, you're about five thousand square feet there? Give or take, a little more.
Seven thousand square foot there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be a second level over top of the bay.
No. Make it easy to have a ruler. You got a ruler?
Yeah. Let me have that big one like a yardstick.
Leave it there for now.
I need one up here underneath there, that will get out of control.
That's probably seventy-five feet, the living space long. By fifty-five, give or take, feet wide. So, yeah, that's probably four thou, close to seven thousand, eight thousand square feet.
Give or take.
Give or take. That's actually the living space side of it.
Yeah, I, I can get you exact numbers. I apologize, I didn't realize we were going to.
I mean, where I'm at, yeah.
And the number seems big, too. I mean, when we, we start talking about it, and we've got this addition with concrete.
I mean, as, other than the things we mentioned with the demolition of the little shed and so forth, and the drainage, the rest is turned, including data drops for laptops. Actually, something that's not even showed in here that we forgot to put on the plans are partitions in the sleeping area between the bunks is also included.
Not completely, but there, we do have some private rooms in there that Mike had requested.
But.
Well, once we, once we spend all this money, then we have to furnish it all, so we're not done.
Yeah, what's the cost of furnishing it going to be?
Well, and you guys had mentioned, give or take, about fifty on FFNE. You could probably get it down a little less than that. Fair amount, I would assume, is going to be brought over from the existing. But you will have some new beds that you have to do, and I'm sure.
What's the construction time on it?
Probably three months, give or take.
Have you guys talked to local contractors?
Yes, all local. I've got one foreman that's going to come down, oversee the job. All other trades are local, using like Meyer Electric, Butzer for mechanical and plumbing, Teal for sheet metal, United HRB for excavation and concrete. We've got a hundred percent local participation, other than one man, just our, our foreman that we'll bring down.
How many bids did you solicit for that?
Uh, minimum two per trade, most times three.
I mean, where I'm at is, if I'm gonna spend one point two million dollars, I'm gonna build a brand-new building, and I think we can get a brand-new building built for that, so that's just where I'm at.
Seven thousand square feet?
Yep.
Plus bays?
I mean, look at what, uh, what, you know, when we had Kerry in here to tear that down and, and to build three new floors off of space, you know, all masonry construction, you know, one point seven million.
Yeah.
So, that's, I don't know, it's just, it's too expensive for what we're getting, in my opinion.
In a way, this is kinda like building a new building inside of a building. We were running all-new power, plumbing, water, sewer, just using the existing space.
Well, I'm not the guy who, I mean, I don't have any background, so I haven't built my own homes in construction, so I, you know, when it comes to construction questions, I can look at the contracts and understand those, but I have to defer to you guys on the construction side. Jeff, what are your thoughts?
It does seem high. We got seven thousand foot of, of the living space, right?
Yeah.
And to not have to put the concrete down, and that's one of your biggest, uh, costs, but we'll have a lot of concrete out in the front pad, so when you mention that, that did clear some that up. We're gonna be running all-new electric and water, and I don't know what that costs now.
Gas.
And a lot more remodeling than new. Um, you know, the walls are relatively simple.
Yeah, we're cutting in all-new. We're cutting in three new, uh, bays, one-man door. Uh, we are extending, aren't we extending the fire notification system throughout the building?
We are.
Uh, O-two scrubbers, uh, inside, which I don't believe they have any now. Um, so this is a turnkey, uh, fixed cost, um, as opposed to soliciting...
And unless we make a material change...
Exactly.
There's no change in price. I mean, if you guys start digging, I mean, I'll just say hypothetically, you start digging the ground up to lay the sewer line and you find out that there's... Amren accidentally has their main for the entire southwest quarter of Jeff City running through there. You guys have to pay for a hundred percent of the cost. We won't, we don't pay for any change order on that.
Actually, that would be considered an unforeseen condition when we start digging that, only because there's, you know, we've done our due diligence to lay out, try to find out all buried utilities, all that kind of stuff, but if there's an old fuel oil tank that's not been documented, we didn't get out there and start doing so hard.
To that point, we would be remiss as a company to not CYA, you know, in the case of if we dug up an ancient burial.
Right, yeah.
So to that, to that point, what, what we do then is, we say, "Well, here's what we found."
Right.
Everybody has a chance to look at it, discuss it, and so forth. Uh, you are given the opportunity to decide, do you wanna issue a change order to us to adjust the scope, or it holds everyone harmless from walking away from the whole project or that aspect of it? Now, having said that, after over two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars of work in the past ten years in the state of Missouri, we've never had to do either of those. So, we've got a very good track record. We've never had to come back and walk away from a project or significantly adjust scope or so forth.
I mean, we've just had the experience in doing a lot of construction projects with a lot of change orders coming in. And that's really, you know, um, it, I don't think there's ever been a change order yet that wasn't, I mean, it was our fault unless we changed scope. It's always been a change order because of an unforeseen condition. Um, and, you know, how, I, I guess I need to look at the contract. How defined is an unforeseen condition? I mean, if you start digging into the water lines and you find out that the soil's not good,
Oh, that's ours.
Does that become an unforeseen condition? We've had that soil issue, we've had...
Plastic soil is ours.
Okay.
Yeah. I, the, the real unforeseen condition is, just like I mentioned, what we run into more often than anything, we shove a, uh, uh, put a shovel in the ground, fuel oil tanks, i- things that just aren't on anybody's radar. I mean, if we've got bad soil conditions, we take care of them. And we have historically, uh, with several owners that we can put you in touch with. So, you know, that's one of the things that we take on as ours.
I mean, from my perspective, I can't speak to the price, cause I don't know, that's not mine. Um, what appeals to me is the turnkey side of the operation. We go, in three months from today, give or take, we have a facility that's finished, we can move in, we can operate it. We don't have to keep coming back here for change order after change order, um, and we're done. And, you know, my, my experience in every construction project we've done so far, um, is change order after change order after change order, and, and project scope and time that gets longer and longer and longer. I mean, three months to do this project seems pretty darn fast to me. And I'm encouraged by that, don't get me wrong, I like that. I think if we go out to bid, if we took your plans, which we can't do, and I know that, but if we took your plans and threw them out in the street to bid, we'd get a nine or ten-month construction time.
Let's go out there and onsite, have a meeting, uh, Mike, Greg, I mean, y'all don't have to come. That way, we can beat y'all up. You know, it's easier to talk about you when you're not there.
Uh, I mean, I, I think that there's probably some merit to getting out there and walking. I have not gone out and walked the site with these plans in hand. Um, I think there's probably merit to that. I think it's a bigger project than we, than we...
That's what I'm, I wanna go out there and see it. I, even the front pad, just a, you know, fifty foot doesn't seem like that much. You got a retaining wall. You got a lot of stuff out there, but I'd like to see it.
So, instead of, instead of taking a vote now, I think we need to have that walkthrough. You guys are certainly welcome to attend. I mean, I'd love to have, don't get me wrong, prefer to have you attend. I know that schedule juggling gets to be its own set of issues.
Just let us know, we're there.
Okay.
Cause I would like to explain what we're doing there, you know.
I think that would be very helpful for me. Um, you guys wanna try to pick a date?
Um, I, does it have to be during one of your official meeting times, or whatever?
No, we can, we can be flexible on time. Um, you know, we could do it in the afternoon, we can do it in a...
Could we get back to you on that? Cause, you know...
I just don't wanna go too far out.
Keep the ball rolling. We don't go backwards.
Something in the next couple of weeks, maybe?
I mean...
We'll either make up our mind then, if we're gonna pull the plug or pull the trigger.
Yeah. Well, one other thing I wanted to mention when you were talking about the, the quick turnaround, um, is, and we stand behind that, that, you know, we like to, you know, make sure we don't overpromise, but one of the reasons why we could probably execute that so quickly is because, as you know, we've done our due diligence and taken our time.
Right.
One over that bill, it would have been a fine-tooth comb.
Well, you can see we've already developed drawings. We're probably a week away from having...
Finals?
Construction documents.
We got prevailing watch, too.
We're there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that is to the cost.
It's ten, fifteen percent extra charge on top.
Yeah. Yeah, and all...
I keep forgetting to add that on to this stuff, too, so it's wonderful.
Well, I would suggest, I would suggest if you guys can get us to date in the next two weeks, three at the latest, if, I mean, I, I just, the longer you push it off, the less likely we move forward, so...
I, I mean, I'd, I'd come back, heck, later this week or next, I'd have to look at the schedule though.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I can't do next, uh, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, just because my schedule's bad, but we can do later this week.
How do you look this week?
We can do the end of next week.
I can push anything.
I mean, I might even be able to come back. I mean, I, I, my Thursday, I think I have something.
Do Thursday afternoon?
Why not?
We don't have to do mornings. That's just, is the traditional time we have these meetings. If we go out on site, we just have to post it twenty-four hours in advance.
Sure.
So, if you want to check dates...
I'm good Friday, if you want to, if you've, if your Thursday's, I got one little meeting Thursday, but I can push that one, too.
Not too late, Friday afternoon. We got the home show, stuff going on.
Friday, the twenty-first?
Wanna do it right after dinner?
What time do you gotta be home showing?
Um, I don't know, I'm in at two, so I got loaded in. I don't know what time, but probably sometime there.
I don't even know when that starts. Starts at five?
Three.
Three?
Yeah, we got ribbon cutting at two forty-five. I'm not so worried about the ribbon cutting, it's just last-minute stuff we need to...
Do it in the morning?
Got people parking in the wrong place. I get to be a parking Nazi. They won't let me carry a gun, though.
Do it like at ten AM or something? That gives you guys time to get down from St. Louis?
They won't let me carry that either.
I'm sorry, what, what?
Ten AM Friday morning?
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah?
I can't, I've got a, my, my, I can't see my schedule on my phone, but I'm pretty sure I'm free that day.
Okay, why don't we do ten AM, um, Friday morning, twenty-one February, at the facility?
Twenty-one February, so what's that? February twenty-one?
Twenty-one February. Yeah. All right, and we'll just meet out there and we'll convene the commission out there and we'll do a walkthrough.
Great.
Mike, good?
Good to go.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience and putting up with us, um...
Oh, no, come on, we, we, these are big decisions.
Okay.
Good calendar.
Thank you all. Steve, next item on the agenda is presentation by Steve Viley with the Historic City of Jefferson. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Sure, thanks.
So, and thanks for your patience and putting up with us. As you can tell, it's a long agenda, but we wanted, uh, you know, I'll tell you, the, your location sets up so that when we get done with your presentation, we can go right into the discussion that's germane to your presentation, so...
Great.
I think that will make it a little better for you all, too.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. My name is Steve Viley. I'm president of the Historic City of Jefferson. We're a local community organization, about three-hundred-and-fifty members. Some of them are here today, and there were others, but they had to, had to move on, so... Uh, appreciate the time on the agenda. Um, you know, um, I'm here to, to talk about the old jail and the sheriff's residence, and to give you our point of view on the situation. Uh, don't know a lot about it, other than what we've read, uh, in the press reports on that from the last meeting. But, uh, four years ago in twenty-ten, uh, I did come here before the commission, and I know you're faced with a similar question on whether or not to tear down the old jail and the sheriff's residence, and we were pleased at that time that the commission decided, not to tear down the old jail and sheriff's building. Um, you built a new Sally Port, of course, and you did that within the existing structure. So that issue is before you again. Um, I know that just sitting here through this meeting today, as commissioners, you wear a lot of hats. Uh, so, uh, many of them are administrative, probably most of them are administrative, and that, you know, with that hat on, you're looking at square footage needs for the county, and, and you're concerned about the budget as well. I thought it was interesting to read in the paper, if the reports were correct, that by tearing down, uh, you'll, you'll gain more square footage, but you'd also spend about eight, eight-hundred thousand dollars more, uh, in, in taxpayer money. And just looking at the dollars and cents part of it, uh, I mean, if you look at recent elections that we've had, taxpayers have clearly indicated they don't like spending more money than they need to, so the most economical option, uh, would be the one that I would think voters would approve if they had a say in the matter. But as commissioners, you, you are other hats, too, and you're stewards of county resources, and hopefully have an interest in preserving the historic assets of Cole County. The old jail and the sheriff's residence are undeniably historic in nature. They are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. They are part of our beautiful and historic downtown. And, uh, Stephanie was here earlier, of course, talking about the, how the downtown is coming alive, and I think a lot of that has to do with, uh, how, how, how nice everything looks and the historic buildings that are present. I've heard some say, "Well, in regard to this problem, you could tear the buildings down and build something up that looks like what's there now." And I guess what I'm saying is, why, why would you do that? Why would you tear down the authentic to put up, uh, a fake in its place? Property owners all over downtown are, are taking down the fake facades and going back to the original structures. Local banks and city government are encouraging this with special incentives for property owners. Perhaps the county is participating in that, I don't know. And it's one of the trends that's earned our community that designation that we heard of, America's Most Beautiful Small Town. The Chamber of Commerce was really, uh, bursting with pride over this at the recent annual meeting. We're proud of our city and the trend in recent years to save and preserve our old town buildings, recognizing the character and beauty that they add to our town. So our group urges the county commission to continue the preservation trend by voting to retain these authentically historic buildings with workmanship that will not be duplicated, and to keep them as part of the landscape of beautiful downtown Jefferson City. Finally, get a little philosophical here. I wanna leave you with a quote from the namesake of our city, Thomas Jefferson, and he actually said this about preservation. "Given the present economic and environmental conditions, preservation is no longer a matter of taste, but a mandatory expression of basic social responsibility." So, we, we hope that you'll accept this social responsibility by voting for the rehabilitation of the historic structures rather than for demolition.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments, Chris?
Um, so I got lots of emails from several members of the Historic City of Jefferson, and, uh, so I, I understand where you guys are coming from. History is, is hard to, um, maintain. And so, the one question that I asked all of them was, is the history the exterior of the building with the interior destroyed, or is the history the whole building?
Well...
It's a tough question to answer.
It is a tough question, and, uh, it's a, you know, obviously, the whole building would be the whole story.
Sure.
Uh, but that's not often possible. We, we have a lot of what we call adaptive reuse that is going on in the community, taking an older building, keeping the building itself, trying to utilize whatever you could of the inside, but of course, making it something that's useful for, for today's environment. So, so, you know, if we had our preference, um, you know, uh, yeah, we'd like to keep the sheriff's residence, maybe make it a museum, that type of thing, but you also have needs, and so, uh, if we couldn't do that, we would certainly prefer to at least keep the buildings intact and to do the adaptive reuse to meet your needs.
Sure. Okay.
Jeff?
I don't really have any questions. I understand where y'all are coming from. Uh, I mean, it's a tough decision to make, so I appreciate your input and your opinions on it.
And, and I do have one question.
Sure.
Um, one of the driving forces behind what we're looking at is, um, you're familiar with the courthouse itself, I assume, uh, and the large courtroom that's in there. Um, that's our only large courtroom. It's our only courtroom that's significant to do major trials, major cases. We're bursting at the seams. Um, I don't know if you've looked at the plans, looked at the options, um, the options that were presented to us and... I'm not gonna throw Kerry on the floor unless I have to, so, but Kerry Gamper from Art Text Lines, who did those plans. From my review of those plans, we cannot replicate, we cannot create that sufficient courtroom space inside the existing footprint of the two buildings. Um, we can create a small courtroom, much like the ones we have that are not functional for major cases. Or we can create a slightly small, a slightly larger courtroom with no attached office space for the judges, because of the way the buildings are built. At one time, as I recall, we looked at truly gutting the two buildings. In other words, sawing everything out, making them nothing but a shell and reconstructing inside, and the cost to that was very, very large. I think that was four, three or three and a half or four million dollars, yeah, because it was such a large, to maintain the complete integrity of the outside, but completely tear out the inside, I mean, to nothing, was very expensive. So my concern is, and I would get your input on it, how do we create that courtroom space with the attached judge's office that we need in a footprint that currently just doesn't work in a cost-efficient manner?
Yeah. And I can't pretend to know all the details and know all of the information that you have or that Kerry has, but, you know, I guess in my own house, if I have remodeling needs, I have to worry about my budget, and sometimes I can't make things as perfectly or as wonderful as I would like them to be, so I do what I can do. And, uh, you know, the older buildings, they are not, um, that's kind of the character of them. They, they're not, everything doesn't match up, and, um, you know, they got nooks and crannies that new buildings you could tear down and not have any of that, but then you lose that character. So, um, you know, you do what you can do, uh, within your budget and, um, and make to. I mean, you know, I have to do...
And from our perspective, Steve, and we can do, make the space within our budget if we take the buildings down. If we don't take the buildings down, we can spend less. I mean, it is a lower-cost option, but we can't come up with the space for the courtroom that we need. That puts us in a bit of a Hobson's dilemma. I mean, we either spend eight hundred, give or take, thousand dollars, eight fifty, is that what it was, eight fifty-five, something like that, and not solve our primary space issue. Or we spend more than that, probably one point seven million, but we solve our primary space issue. That puts us in a, I mean, from a financial perspective, in all honesty, we have the money to do either option. Those are both within our budget. Four million dollars is not within our budget. The, the problem with it is, do we solve the space option or not? Because the one thing we struggle with in this location is, we are landlocked. We have a church to one side of us. We have the library to the other side of us. There's no indication the library's moving anywhere in the near future, and there's no indication, well, considering all the work the church has done on its building, I don't think it's moving anywhere in the near future. That leaves us in a, in a very awkward situation.
Sure.
The other thing we struggle with, and Jeff's the poster child for this, is dealing with how we do parking, cause we don't have sufficient parking in our facilities. Uh, so the only space, for lack, I use quotation marks, that's free and available, is our only parking. Um, so...
The parking lots that are adjacent.
Yeah, it's the one parking, and the only empty space we have is a parking lot, and it takes, it would take all of our parking, which I don't think is an option that... No, I'm talking about right behind our building. Right out the back door of this building, there are twenty-five spots. That's give or take all the parking for the courthouse complex.
And, and a member of our group actually, you know, suggested to me, "Could you not build there, have parking underneath on the first or second levels and office space above that?"
And, and that cost number is dramatically higher. Now, now you're, now you're beyond our budget. And that's part of the, you know, that, that's part of the difficulty we're struggling with, is we have a certain amount of money that we've been, we think, good stewards to reserve. is, we have a certain amount of money that we've been, we think, good stewards to reserve so that we can address these concerns. We don't have enough money, and I don't think the voters would support going out to raise a tax to create a very large building in the interest of saving the sheriff's house and the old jail. I don't, I don't...
Well, you could, you could save them, and it wouldn't be perfect. It wouldn't be the ideal situation that you'd like. But you would save taxpayer money, and you would save those structures. You know, my area of expertise, today anyway, is historic preservation, not construction and not building. And I hate to raise the point, but we've got this beautiful new jail building across the street that has lots of space. It appears, my God, it's large enough. And could there not be courtroom space within that building?
Apparently, according to the judges, because we looked at that pretty in-depth, in fact, we actually thought maybe we would be able to pull that off. There are some federal cases out there that indicate you cannot have courtrooms inside Gives the impression, sorry, the federal government comes in and gives the impression that they're already guilty because you're coming into a jail for a courtroom.
Yeah, I mean, that's a shame because that's the ideal place.
It would be, and I don't disagree. In fact, had we been able to use that space, and Jeff, because before Chris was here, I think, Jeff, had we been able to use that space, we wouldn't be where we're at today. Unfortunately, the courts advise us we cannot do that. That puts us back to the box we're in. And actually, as you'll recall, when you came up in 2009 or 2010, that was all part of that discussion. And we did think that maybe the solution was going over there. Unfortunately, that's not the solution, as we learned, which is disappointing.
Sure. Oh, yeah, obviously. Well, we wanted to give you our input. We would like to see those buildings saved and reused in the way we talked about it. If that's possible, we would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's where I started out leaning towards, was trying to reuse the building, demo in it, because I thought that was going to be more, but there's really, we're not going to save money by doing that. We're getting more space for more money. We're looking at the long-term use that's going to be more flexible. And like I said, we can't get that courtroom out of the footprints.
I think we're, by the way, just for the record, we're on our next agenda item, which is the facilities plan discussion.
That's just where I was jumping in.
Just for the record, and we did, I did ask Kerry, well, I guess we all asked Kerry to attend, so Kerry, thanks for coming in, we appreciate it. I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, we never did find anything as far as getting any kind of grants to help with if we was going to reuse it or adapt it to really show any savings. How much, we didn't have the price of new windows in there, Kerry. Did you have a estimate the other day when we were talking? I don't know what it was. It was six figures.
Yeah, it is. Again, it depends on what the use inside the building is. But there's 12 windows on the east, 18 windows on the north. What you do with those will vary dramatically as far as how you renovate the interior. Something as dramatic as gutting the interior and realigning floors means that floors no longer line up with windows.
Right.
So you're probably looking at spandrels and things like that. If you, if, spandrels, solid, solid glass. If you reuse the floor plates as-is for storage or office space or something like that, you're just talking about window replacement. I would assume that the people...
But if we were going with option one, and we was going to put all new windows in there, we were well over...
Hundred thousand.
Yeah. So there's added cost.
Does that take into account, okay, so an option one, any roof repair, any exterior restoration, any other building maintenance issues?
Yeah, there would be some maintenance, tuck pointing, and things like that to make sure the building is good and sealed up.
Okay.
And that's not in that original price number, is it?
That's not, it's within that budget that we gave, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you know, from my perspective, we need the courtroom space. That's the driver here. And we are probably going to get another circuit judge in the next year, 18 months at the longest. We need two. We're not going to get two. The state's munificence, they won't give us that, but we will get one. We're going to need space for them. And we don't have that currently. We have four courtrooms. They're full. Three of them are small. Of the three small courtrooms, only one of them can actually do, effectively do a jury trial, and it doesn't do it very well. We have one large courtroom, and that's what we need, is another large courtroom and attached judicial space. And I don't see there's any way we can do that. Adaptedly, adaptively, I'm tired, adaptively reusing the existing buildings.
And a lot of it depends on, you hit the nail on the head, so that, Steve, you know, what you're going to use it for, what you're going to adaptively reuse it for. You know, I'm all about saving buildings, just look at our own office building. Could we use it for storage? Could we use it for county office space? Yes. Could we use it for small courtroom space? Yes. The larger courtroom in the courthouse is about 1,400 square feet. That will not fit in that footprint. We might be able to get a thousand-square-foot courtroom without judges' chambers attached, and there would be a column in the center of the courtroom. You know, that, just the way the structure works, it'd be, not like this, but it would be in the middle of the courtroom. If you had a large courtroom, you'd try to get a larger, the smaller courtrooms in the courthouse are 650, 700 square feet, so they're roughly classroom size, not unlike this room right here. We could probably fit that in that footprint. So it comes down to, what are you trying to fit in there? If you're trying to fit in another, a fourth, small courtroom, probably feasible. Large courtroom, not feasible with saving the structure. Then you get into, you know, how much you're going to try to save of the old facility and things like that.
I mean, is there anything that says that we can't put a courtroom in the old jail? I mean, we can't put one in the new jail? Can't we put one in the old jail?
No, the old jail is no longer the jail.
It's not really a jail. The other thing is that, you know, that real estate is, from a security standpoint, if you think about putting a courthouse across the street or in this building somewhere, you know, you sort of start compromising that secure envelope, and I would defer to law enforcement for that. But there's something very enticing about having another courtroom right there with the same security vestibule, the same corridors, the same bathrooms, the same envelope.
Well, it also gets us an ADA accessible entrance to the courthouse.
Right.
Which has been a major issue that we've struggled with now for years. And that's something I think has value, no matter which way we go. I think that has really critical value to have an ADA accessible or...
The county has invested in updating restrooms in some of the public service areas of the courthouse. I mean, it's still a historic building. It's not like building new, but we'd be able to avail some of the restrooms and corridor spaces and things like that that are already there. So you would be getting more, more than that usable square footage on that side versus going somewhere else.
Well, I mean, I think this has been a good discussion. I have a lot of concern about adding more office space and more courtroom space to our confined footprint. It's going to create more staff parking issues. Currently, people that do business with the county have no place to park whatsoever.
They can park down the street. They're just lazy.
Where?
Just right down the street. There's parking down there.
Well, you have to, you have to go three blocks to get out of the meter zone.
Well, that's all right.
And then there's limited parking down there. I don't know. After rethinking this, I mean, I think this is a Band-Aid to our bigger problem. You know, I agree, we need to get out of the Carnegie Building, but, I mean, I think there's some, there's some pros to doing it where the old jail is, but...
So knock the old jail down, make parking.
No, I'm not saying that. No. I'm just saying, you know, we're looking at a facilities, we're looking at a facilities master plan. And so I think the EMS bump out was way overpriced. And, you know, I think for 1.2 million dollars, we could build a brand-new facility. Logistically, and the county have a great facility that people would say, hey, man, they're doing some really good things at the county, something that people could be proud of. I think we have problems at the health department as well. I think they're overcrowded. And so, you know, we're looking at things just individually and not as a whole. One of our goals is to get the assessor and the collector together. You know, could we look at adjacent properties and try to acquire properties to expand our footprint a little bit?
That's purely a sweep, isn't it?
Yes.
Just want to be sure.
No, we want you to ride together in the same car, it'll be, share a parking space. So I think we've got to look to expand this. I know it becomes some security issues with, maybe where does the commission and the assessor and collector go? And, you know, and I've said this before, I think we just have to look at maybe moving some of our offices unless we can acquire more space here, and I don't see that happening.
Well, the courts have to stay where the courts are.
I understand that.
And that's not really an option to move, and we need the courtroom space. That's the, you know, that's the solution we have to come up with. And that doesn't allow us to move down the block or around the corner because there's no way to address that outside of the footprint of this location. We're not going to, we can't come up with the money to build a brand-new courthouse.
I understand that.
So we're going to have to address that issue, and the longer we wait to address that, you know, it just, it doesn't get any easier.
I'm not saying that it does get any easier, but, you know, if, if we brought the public defender out of Carnegie and we left the prosecutor here and we turned this building into a courtroom, or put a courtroom over here, yeah, is there some security issues? Yeah, maybe, but I just think we've got to look, we've got to think outside the box a little bit because we're just, it's going to get worse. I mean, where's people, where are people going to park?
Well, I mean, I'll tell you that there are, there are few to none that I know of courthouses that have public parking attached to them. If you go to the big cities, the courthouses, they have parking, but it's secured, it's only for their own folks, and you pay an arm and a leg to park on the street or in a garage. You go to smaller towns, you find that it's all street or garage parking that's not related to the courthouse. Even Columbia, which, you know, is analogous to, it's not exactly the same, they have no public parking, free public parking for courthouse visitors, courthouse complex visitors. The city built a huge parking garage, but you pay to park there, but it's not a free parking garage. So, you know, parking's always going to be an issue in an urban core, and it's never going to, I mean, I can't see Jeff City building the 20-story parking garage you got in downtown Columbia. So we're always going to have parking issues with county offices. If we move, if we expand our footprint on this block and pick up buildings on the, what would that be, Adams Street or even down onto Capitol, it won't solve the parking problems. We will never be able to create enough parking.
Well, at a certain point, you, I mean, it's always going to be easy to go find cheaper land out on the edge of town, which can kill your downtown. At the same time, you don't want to turn your downtown into a sea of parking lots either, then it wouldn't be a downtown. The density is part of what's attractive about a historic downtown. So I don't know, you know, I agree, you're always going to have a parking issue downtown. Nobody that has their offices or their businesses downtown because it's easy, because they feel there's a value to being downtown.
Jeff?
I'm just looking at it as more of a long-term solution to the room we're going to need there, 5,500 square foot. I don't think it's really saving us any money by using the footprint. It's not near as flexible. You know, being a good steward of tax money is not necessarily spending less, it's getting the most out of the money you got as well. And we do have some money in receivership, and we could put the same amount into it. So I think getting that 5,500 square foot would open up some opportunities. I don't agree with the parking being a problem, I just think people are too lazy to walk. So that one's not going to be watered, and then saving the taxpayers' money, I don't see that as, if we spend less now, I think it's going to cost us in the long run. So I disagree with that one, too. And I do appreciate the historic significance, but I'm also struggling to be able to take my sons up here and go, hey, that one famous guy was up here for, you know, who was it? And so that's why I don't struggle as much with it. I mean, I think that's neat, but not that neat.
Well, I mean, I see how much money we spend with the city of Jefferson every month on parking, and it's astronomical, so, anyway.
And that's partly, in all honesty, that's partly because we made a conscious decision that we would pay for parking for our employees.
And I think that's the right thing to do.
Not everybody does that. I mean, you're wrong. Not everybody pays for parking for their employees. A lot of places, the job is, you know, you pay for your own parking. We made a conscious decision to do that. I think that's the right, I personally think that's the right decision. I think our employees need places to park.
I agree.
But the city, you know, we went through a negotiation to buy that little bitty lot back off the corner, and we thought we had a deal. And the deal was subject to appraisal of the property. Appraisal came in, we agreed to it. The city said, no way they were selling it for what it appraised at. They wanted three times the appraisal amount. They know it's a revenue stream, and I can't blame them for that. They're making money off of it, we're not. I can't see moving the courthouse or the court offices out into the extended area of the county. I think that doesn't solve any of our problems. So we're stuck with where we're at, and we have to make the best use of it we can. And I think that the best use of it's to get the maximum space out of the footprint we have.
I would agree with getting the maximum space out of our dollars. I just, I've looked at properties surrounding here, and I think there's some properties that we could acquire. I think that we should look at those. And so I don't disagree that maximum space is needed. I just, I just think that we're, we're being short-sighted, and we should look at some other alternatives, so that's where I'm at.
So are you suggesting that we delay making a final decision so we can explore other options? Or are you suggesting rejecting both these options and going back to the beginning and starting over? And I don't, I don't...
I mean, if we vote on an option today, I will vote no because I think we should look at other options. Not because I'm voting no on either, on either option, but I think that there's properties maybe in this downtown area that I have looked at that we could acquire and maybe build another structure here. And now that, that concept means putting a courtroom possibly hidden here or, and moving some of the other elected officials over into that space. But, you know, I don't know if we could acquire those properties, but one in particular across from the Carnegie Building, there's, there's almost a whole, whole block that, you know, I think would, could possibly be acquired, but maybe not. That's all I'm saying, is that I think we should look at some other things.
If we want to take a week or two, and you want to, you want to do some inquiring on property, I don't think that slows anything down. It allows us an opportunity to make a decision. You know, we looked at that before, and I'm all for looking at it again. I think the, the big factor that we're stuck with on some of those options is the cost factor. If we can acquire a, you know, use the piece of land you're talking about, if we can acquire that piece of land for a relatively small amount of money, that's great. If we can acquire that piece of land for $2 million, and then Kerry's going to tell us it's going to cost us $4 million to build a building on it, you know, we're out of the ballpark. It doesn't help us any. So, yeah, I don't, I would like to move forward. Much like in the EMS building, I don't mind delaying in the short term to flush out other options. I'm not inclined to delay long term. And I'll tell you that if we vote today, I mean, I'll vote to move forward on, on taking down the jail and the sheriff's space and going forward to create the courtroom space that we need.
I'm fine with giving you some opportunity to find some other ideas. I don't have a problem with that at all. I'd vote the same way as Mark today if we're going to go ahead with it today, but in all due respect, I think I'd like to have all three of us on the same page. If you've got some other ideas, then let's give you a little more time, play with it. give you a little more time, play with it, and if you find something that seems feasible, we can deal with it then.
And I'm certainly, you know, Steve and you, thank you all for being here and staying around. If you all have suggestions, if you know of adjacent buildings that are available or are in the close enough area that it doesn't... Isn't disruptive of services, we're certainly happy to look at those options. We're just on a short timeline because we do need to start making some decisions and getting things done. And I don't mind if you wanna pick a time, like, I don't know, maybe that first week of March to come back, and we can revisit. I just don't want to go... I don't want to be in a position where what we're doing is delaying to delay, for lack of a better term.
Typical government.
Yeah.
No, I agree.
Can't get all of us to agree, we'll have to agree to this.
Kerry, I don't know what your schedule's like.
You're just waiting for us to make a decision for one of them, so you got all... You got all year.
I would suggest... What do we have on the 5th of March?
We're just gonna tag him along for a few more meetings.
That's another... Do we want to tack this onto a big agenda, or do we want to stake this on a...
It doesn't matter. I think it'll be relatively short discussion, maybe.
Well, we have an agenda set for Wednesday, March 5th.
Put it on it.
Okay. We will take this back up Wednesday, March 5th, and, you know, I'm gonna ask that at that point we take a vote and get some guidance and decision made.
And I'm fine with that. If Chris comes up with something that's feasible, we need to... If we agree to all look at it at the same time, then we'll do that, so...
I agree.
Cinco de Marcho. There we go.
Cinco de Marcho.
Hey, I know my Spanish.
Nine AM. And we will put that as the first item on the agenda. So, no matter what else comes up that day, it's going after this discussion. Take everything else at your own danger. Thank you all very much for coming in, and again, Steve, if you all have suggestions, please let us know. All right? Thank you.
We missed some stuff here.
Uh, no. The only thing we skipped was the MAC thing because Dick wasn't here, so we didn't get the presentations done.
Good spot to get a cup of coffee.
Where's Estes's stuff? Oh, there it is.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break. We're gonna come back and plow through the rest of this stuff. I don't have any questions. If you'd like to be here, it's okay. As I told you, I certainly have people to select. And I think it's incumbent upon us to at least hear what the other options are. I don't know what the other options are. I've looked at the other adjacent buildings.
Okay, so you took out all the...
That's what we're... Missing part of our plan is we're desperately trying to... Because it's not open for us, and to do that requires moving all the spaces around. And one of the things we're doing is we create sheets printed up with all the space. And we're actually gonna take blocks and say, okay, I can use this next space.
So, it just rashes off, five, three.
Great. There's our facility.
I mean, I don't know. Is it their existing EMS?
We do all this with public points, and this is a unique exception.
So, that's the next one.
We had such a long agenda. You know, we have a huge agenda, and we put this on the esteemed alone.
No, intergovernmental system, great.
We're not gonna anticipate this, because creating a new committee. Because every committee that we create is a tough one. Has taken years to accomplish.
Interest, $80,000. And this one, you just need to take this one.
We created a jail committee, which is before I got here, I mean, they created a...
Minus the...
And that's... And just...
It's not a...
That's right, too. Now...
That's what I'm saying.
You got your transfer in and transfer out.
It's a high ceiling.
We didn't put anything. So, sales taxes.
You know, I'll get 20 minutes or whatever. Six ten is zero, right? No, you didn't put...
There are parts we can do without. And there are parts we can't. So, with the jail and the courts, the law enforcement officials that ask to stay, they ask to stay.
Okay.
The assessor, the court, or they... But all the judicial stuff.
This should be 674 here.
So, one option, yeah, this theoretically. This building is...
Sale of capital sense, and then that one should be zero because we didn't budget anything.
We can try to find somewhere else. And we can build a...
That must have been last year. That should be zero.
And the assessor.
So, capital expenditures are probably going to be zero again.
That might be a solution.
Emergency management would be...
It means... Sheriff's house.
Okay, so 171, 181?
We're not gonna do all of them. Can't do them. That's just too much money.
Parkinson's rag is... What did it... You have to determine what we transferred.
Currents, after remodel, and build. So, farmland and build. Farmland and model.
Okay, so you need to subtract eight from that.
And to the sheriff's house, jail. You know, it's...
Okay. Health and welfare. It is... You're gonna have to add them together. 215, 310. Plus 1,572, 374. Plus 62.
We own the land that it's supposed to be, outside the walls.
62, yep.
It's a big piece of land, it's got a big building.
Judicial is 64, 304. 151, 646. 51, 646. And 366, 414. And 322, 423.
Oh, we're good. Yeah, I don't know. We had that closed session right off the bat. Usually they got that again, and that was a 45-minute start.
1,916, 747.
Yeah, a little more time. I haven't had more said, y'all got some ideas?
27,500.
Right in front of us.
1,036.
Still struggling to see what the actual historic value of that jail is.
Zero one. This is in your transfer. That's it on that one. This is the big one. I'm at all of them.
That's what we expected them to have the figures for, but I don't know. You spend more money trying to save something than it's worth a lot of times, and that one, that... Just being at jail, it's not like Sonny Lister was jailed there or something, it's...
Skip that one. 421.
Of the jail or the courthouse?
We need to subtract out the contingency.
We'd still be able to give it the same book on the side.
So, when we get done, yeah.
All right. So, those two. All right, buddy. I appreciate it. Thank you. See you.
And it should just be...
The most beautiful city. I mean, it's like, who can you get to vote the most?
No.
Stuff like that. How many people are outside of Jeff City voting on Jeff City being the most beautiful? So...
Track it out.
I... I think it's a way for us to feel good about ourselves and pat ourselves on the back.
We usually do, but it's fine.
600, 7,000, 7,000 or so about, right?
Yeah.
If we don't want either side to...
Right. What is it?
I mean, they'll go to Mokane, too, though.
Six?
And that's... Up here, they have... They're gonna be closer to more restaurants and stuff, so I understand. I don't know. I mean, the Carnegie building, you know, used to have a theater in it, the library and stuff like that. I can see that one more than I can see the jail, so I just...
I was gonna say, you need to make sure that this is actual cash. This is budget cash.
I mean, this building's gonna become historic at some point, and...
Because it's different.
And it's gonna cost a lot to try to keep it. I mean, there's been money on keeping the windows and Lincoln roof up. Here's the...
I use the cash budget.
Always, it's hard to keep that tempered up there at all. Oh, my goodness, yeah, because he's got a...
Because she needs to realize that that's...
All the heat goes up to them.
This is the dream.
They're hot.
And it's not gonna be where it was.
I don't have a problem looking at other options, but if y'all have something, holler at us. You know how to get over them. Chris got some ideas with some buildings and stuff. We'll see where it goes. I don't know. One of the easiest is gonna make, there's just one that I said when I decided on going. I stand by my decision and waffle on it.
But it's gonna change some, which is cruel. I mean...
You can waffle it on a decision. Make a decision, stand by it. Because Lincoln's hindsight's a much better one. Make a decision, pick one. Don't play second guesses because you're gonna beat yourself up second guess.
On your schedule.
I said it ain't 99, she was like, but I know what it can happen. But she needs to realize most people look...
Hopefully, we're about to. Well, thanks for coming out. I see you at Eastside Business, those vehicles last week or two weeks ago, so it'll be another couple weeks. We'll see at that one, so... All right, we'll see you, Ken.
Wait a second, guys. I spent real money on some new snow boots, so I know that once I spend that money, it's the end of the...
You know, that would be cheaper geared by snow boots and a nice park instead of parking places. Hey, Chris, you ready? We can stir.
Yeah, you can everybody stir.
Okay.
Big stir.
We'll go back. Councillor Payable. Airtime motion to approve Councillor Payable.
So moved.
I think I've got one in there, right?
I didn't see it.
I know you gave it to Chelsea. I haven't seen it yet, though.
The day that she said we had till 3 o'clock, I came in and just gave it to her because I knew that Mark and Chris would have one, too, and I was gonna try to get it spread out.
It's in Ian's last batch.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll let you all do this.
So, I'll make second discussion. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, abstained.
Okay. Signing of agreement with CGM, Health Department Software.
Glad some goodness and bad news. Good news, I'm not asking you for any money today. Bad news is I don't have an agreement for you to sign.
Then we'll move it on.
Yeah, they sent us an agreement, and it's for the unidirectional interchange with the Show Me Back vaccine registry. Jill had a couple comments, and they wanted to do it for two years. It should be one year, you know, little things like that. And they're supposed to have it back, so she actually, afternoon, we don't have it.
Let's take it next week.
Yeah, I did send the... Send the email to terminate our contract with that smart. I've not heard one single word back. So, actually, today, they started using the old system again. He hasn't worked with us to get it upgraded, so everything is going good there. There was cheering in the department when I got to the asset, so it's all good. But, yeah, I'll bring it back soon as we get it.
Okay, sounds great. Mailbox structure right-of-way discussion.
So, we had a couple of issues with some struck... Actually, structures of mailbox that we hit with Public Works, either accidentally or whatever.
Or whatever.
Well, I mean, regardless of how it happens, so we're talking about the big masonry structures that, you know, are actually in the right-of-way that violate ordinance or our policy and the postal service. And so, just wanted to try to give Larry and Larry some direction as to what we, as commissioners, have as far as a policy and what we're gonna do in the event that we damage or repair those. And then, one of my concerns as well was within this regulation, it also has, you know, the removal of non-conforming mailboxes that the commission has chosen not to actively tell people to remove. And so, I'm just kinda thinking out loud, but I think we should have some public awareness that, look, these are illegal structures, and we either don't allow them, you know, we grandfather some in, we don't allow them going forward, or...
Or you have the statute or the regulation or whatever. Is that in the subdivision regulations, Larry? Or is that a post office thing, or what is it?
Both. The post office on their website, Lane, says that you should only use it four-by-four wood posts.
Should only use, or shall only use?
It's a big difference.
Because I know a lot of people have concrete.
Well, it says the federal highway, on their deal, it says, "If you're mounting a curbside mailbox or post near the street, the support should be secure and safe. The best supports are designed to bend or fall away if a car hits them. The Federal Highway Administration recommends a wooden mailbox support, no bearing in four-by-four or a two-inch diameter steel or aluminum pipe buried at your post no more than 24 inches deep so it can give away in an accident. Don't use dangerous supports such as heavy metal posts, concrete posts, farm equipment such as milk cans filled with concrete." That's what's on the post office's website.
There's nothing they have to adhere to, though. Nothing says, "If you don't, then we're gonna not deliver your mail," or "You're gonna be fined" or anything, right? But what's the right-of-way? Do we... What's our...
Ours, the Traffic Safety Manual that was adopted back in 2001, went further than that. It actually said that they were not to be allowed at that time. For whatever reason, I can't speak, the previous commissions, it was chosen not to enforce that. We've... What Larry and I would like is just some guidance. Right now...
What's the issue that's brought it up?
They've brought one that...
We're not going with one of the masonry ones.
And so, do you just fix a mailbox, or do you...
You pay whatever the cost to fix a mailbox. It's in accordance to our policy, so a $50 mailbox and a $20 pipe and a bag of concrete.
That's what we've been doing in the past.
I would not pay to fix a masonry mailbox. You want to put one of those out? That's great. More power to you. It's not in conformance with our code. No, I'm not sure I want to go make them take them down.
But I'd like to take it a little bit further and send the ones that we know that are out there, send them letters stating that this is against our policy, and we don't allow them, not to actually make them take them down, but it... and we don't allow, not, not to actually make them take them down, but if somebody hits them, they're liable for it. And we will not fix them if they get knocked over.
Well, if somebody wrecks into one and, you know, it doesn't break away, then are, are they liable for?
Does the city have any kind of?
Non-conforming, they could be.
Yeah.
Does the city have any code or restriction on these things?
No, they don't. I talked to Drew, they don't.
They don't normally replace them either.
I've never had mine hit, so I don't know.
My parents got hit.
I, I, when I lived in the county, I had to get hit, but we lived on streets that didn't have curb. We have curb and gutter, so I've never had a mailbox hit since I've been.
What we've done in the past, uh, I know Chris, we've sat down with him, what we offer to do, if, if we knock a mailbox down, what we'll do is if, we either repair it, or we'll put up a new one on a four-by-four post with a new mailbox, if the old mailbox, what we've offered in the past, um, is to tell them that if they wanna put up something different or fancier mailbox, we'll get, we'll cut a check for that amount that we'd have stuck in a four-by-four post and a mailbox. And they can put up what they want.
Well, we have in the past paid for plastic, the, the plastic.
Slide overs.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I asked Jill, I mean, just kinda playing devil's advocate or being Jeff for a little bit, um, you know, it is in the right-of-way, it is a solid structure and no telling how those are built. I mean, if somebody did hit that and it caused a fatality, I'd say that the landowner is liable and, uh, and they could be sued for wrongful death.
Why are you driving in the right-of-way? Why are you hitting my mailbox? I mean, that's why people put them up like that, because they get tired of them being knocked down.
That's why there is right-of-way and that's why there is a ditch, so that if you swerve to miss a deer or various other things, you can go in the ditch and, and, you know.
You don't have ditches.
Well.
Plenty of streets don't have ditches. We're just playing me.
Yeah. But I mean, even if, even if you run off the, the road slightly and it pulls you to the right and, and you hit that structure, you know, and it happens.
If we have this and it says that those aren't acceptable, they don't conform, I think, I'm the same way, I'm not gonna replace that. The whole brick structure or whatever they got, they're gonna get a four-by-four post and a mailbox.
And the person in question that, that's contacted Chris and I, he's been super nice about it, I mean, he's not been obnoxious or abusive.
Did he know it was non-conforming, or?
Uh, I don't think at the time, but, uh, you know, I did pass on the information.
Well, I mean, before he built it and stuff, he didn't know that there was an actual rule and, you know, maybe the builder built it and maybe he knew the rule and did it anyway.
Yeah, that, that's all I kinda would like to see is, look, that these things are non-conforming, something that, that we put out in the public says, hey, these masonry structures for mailboxes are non-conforming and don't meet county regulations. You know, whether they take them down or not, I'm not saying that we should tell them that they need to take them down, but.
There's other mailboxes, I, I know of one now, um, out on, it's actually a six-by-six steel pipe that no way would give. There's others, but like Larry said, I would like, you know, if, with your all's blessing, you know, we'll get Andy to go out and inventory the ones where they're at and send them a letter saying these are non-conforming, you know, if they get damaged, you know, I'd probably like to pass it through Jill to make sure the wording's correct in the letter.
Are any of these gonna damage our equipment or facilities? I mean, hitting a small mailbox is gonna do nothing to the plow. Hitting a six-by-six metal pole?
It didn't, it didn't hurt our vehicles. The one in question is at a cul-de-sac and they've got a great big rock sitting right there, right up against the side of the road. He was trying to avoid that and the mailbox and it was late at night and he didn't see it, he backed into it. Like I said, it, I, like I told John, I said, you know, I can't say that we didn't do it, but at the same time, I, without something from you all, I couldn't say that I was gonna go out there and replace a mailbox that by our own regulations is, um, not legal. I told him we would put one up to what, you know, metro requirements and he didn't like that answer, so.
But it would be nice to have a formal policy where we're only replacing wood posts with mailbox, or if somebody has a plastic box, we're only paying you what we have in the wood post and mailbox. Cause we've replaced a lot of plastic boxes too.
There's just a ton of different kinds of mailbox posts and mailboxes and, you know, different subdivisions have different things and, I mean, you, you probably spend from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. And that's not even getting into a masonry one.
Right, that, that's why we would, would like to get something, at least some guidance from you all. That's what we had in the past from the commission and again, it's, it's reared its ugly head again.
If I got a little nicer mailbox and it gets knocked down, I'm not gonna be happy with just having a plain Jane mailbox and a post put up to replace it. If mine is conforming, so, that's tough.
Most other, most other government entities I've talked to, the other counties and cities, they, unless their actual vehicle hit it, they don't pay for them at all.
Then my suggestion would be, we need to have a policy that says, we do not replace mailboxes that are in the right-of-way, period.
That'd be pretty much all of them.
Solves problem. You're gonna put your mailbox in the right-of-way?
It's gotta go in the right-of-way.
Not my problem. My name's not the US Post Office. I mean, that's the problem with these kinds of policy, I'm, I'm using it as an exaggeration, you may be wrong, I'm not, it's not serious about it. The, the reality of it is, is there is no policy. You cannot create a policy that works. If you say, if you take our policy and you scrupulously enforce it, it ain't gonna work. If you don't enforce it at all, it ain't gonna work. I mean, it's, it's one of those things where sometimes you just can't have a policy, because the policy doesn't help you at all. In fact, I mean, I think you make an argument, the policy hurts us more than it helps us. We have created a policy of what you have to do and then if we don't enforce it and something bad happens, we potentially open ourselves up to liability because we created a policy that we don't enforce and we don't leave a discretionary element in there. It's.
So do we need to repeal that policy and?
I think it ought to be in the building codes, is where the policy ought to be.
By the time that was written, I don't think the building codes are in.
And then, and then it's the bill, the homeowner and the builder's requirement to do that. And, you know, it just means that the marker, whoever goes out and inspects a home, they look and see where the mailbox is. They're already out there looking anyway.
We, we have been doing that, I know over in Bennington Place, there's some over there and the inspector has been giving them a letter saying that the masonry structures are not in compliance, but it hasn't stopped anything, so.
Well, I mean, are we allowed, I mean, it's not part of our building codes, we can't really do anything. What's our enforcement ability through the building code? If somebody decides to?
If, the only enforcement policy we have in building codes is we can put a shadow on their, um, deed. That's the only thing that we've got right now, we can file something on their deed if the house is not built in accordance with specifications. And all that does is put a cloud on the, on the warranty deed. That's the only enforcement we have right now.
Can you pull their occupancy permit, or?
We don't issue those unless requested.
Yeah. I mean, if you guys have some suggestions on where to go, I'm more than happy to listen to them.
Well, the suggestion I would like, like Larry said, I would like to send out letters saying that they're non-conforming. And if any accidents should happen, uh, that they're liable, they've been notified.
Work with Jill and put a letter to her. I'm okay with that.
That's where the masonry ones, but Jill wants to have a little nicer one.
Even the, the, there's other, other structures that are not safe, let's put that way.
Well, I mean, you're all talking about the.
You're talking about the fancy.
Yeah, two-hundred dollar mailbox instead of the forty-dollar mailbox. What are we gonna do then? Are we saying we're just gonna replace up to, uh, sixty dollars, cause that's gonna include the post and a mailbox, well, and a bag of concrete mix? So do we do that?
They don't go in concrete mix, they, just, most time they're just.
Well, whatever you drive in your ground. So are you just gonna give us sixty-dollar credit and say, here, fix your own mailbox and you can get a nicer one?
That's what we've been doing in the past, except on the, you know.
Except the regular mailbox.
Yeah, the, the slide-ons, where it's still the four-by-four posts, um, they just slide over top of them and we've replaced them. Yeah, we've replaced those.
Why don't you guys work a letter up and bring it back to us?
Okay.
How's that? I'm not sure it's a great solution, but.
Can we work up a policy and bring it back to you?
I'm more than happy to have a policy and a letter. Good?
Sounds good to me.
Good? 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 Signing of Newman, Comley and Ruth PC Agreement. This is to do the litigation on tax appeals, right?
Pass that to Chris, sir.
I guess so.
Let you have that copy. That's, that was USPS, right?
I guess Estes already had to go on.
I don't have any questions, I mean, it's such an agreement, we just have, we have to approve it. So I don't think.
You've been hanging around me that much?
Unless you guys. Oh, you already signed off on it. Oh, so it's an invalid agreement. Tell John Ruth that when he submits his bill, we're gonna refuse to pay it. Good job, sign it now, yeah.
Well, that's why I have the question, that's why I brought it down here, cause he just sent it to us and wanted it sent back to him. We do have some agreements with attorneys that I do not think are signed by the commission.
If we don't enter into a contract, it has no force and validity and we cannot pay it. So if Mark Richardson, I use him as an example, I don't even know if he hires any contracts. Say he hires an attorney on a contract basis and you guys sign off on it. We can sue and they, and somehow they pay it, we can sue to recoup the money at any time, at any location, and they have no defense. Cause the statute says that the county has to enter into the agreement. And unless we expressly delegate authority, and I think it actually has to be express, nobody has authority to sign an agreement for anything.
We don't sign any agreements on the attorneys for due diligence. That rate is set by.
Well, I think there's a court order on that one and that gets us around, an actual court order gets us around us having to comply, cause now we have to comply with a court order to pay an amount.
Plus, we have control in assessment.
Yes, we do. We have a court order that says that.
Well, I guess the one that came to mind was, um, the sheriff's attorney on his case against the county. I'm not sure that I've even signed.
He has a statute.
Yes, that says that he can hire an attorney, but I don't know that.
But he can't pay for it out of any funds that we appropriate.
So, I mean.
He can pay for it out of his slush fund, but he can't pay for it out of. But the assessment fund, the assessment fund is a fund controlled by the county commission, so. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with hiring an attorney, just.
No.
We have to approve the contracts.
I just wanted to, I knew that there were some other ones out there that may.
And John does a great job and, I mean, he charges, I think, a very reasonable rate, a hundred fifty an hour.
Well, those were in the two.
Has that already been executed?
That did the assessors.
It's been by everybody else.
Ruth already gotten that back?
No, but we did. That first round.
No, these are the original. He signed it when he sent it over to us. So, I'm good with it, I don't have a problem with it. I entertain a motion to approve the agreement with Newman, Comley and Ruth, Ruth with an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for defense of assessment matters.
So moved. So, is there a place for you to sign on that?
Yeah, right there.
I mean, you can second for discussion if nothing else, we don't.
Yeah, second.
We talked about this before, I thought, we just never had the actual agreement until it was after the fact and that's why it got put on the agenda today, wasn't it?
Well, he's had other ones that he wanted you to sign, um, in advance, what do you call it?
No, but this one.
That's why, that was why the discussion's on.
But this isn't the first year that Newman, Comley, Ruth has done it.
No, but that's what I think brought it up, was that we have to sign the agreement.
Right.
And it's a professional service, so it's not bid out, so.
Okay.
Well, we have to have somebody to do that.
What?
Yeah, so when we appropriated legal services, he's used legal services to sue us.
Not anymore, you didn't.
Yeah, but once we appropriate this legal services amount.
But he can't, he can't enter into a contract without us signing it.
Yeah, that's why it came down.
But he can turn in a bill for legal services.
And we can refuse to pay it and he can't compel us to pay it if there's not a contract.
And then they can come after him.
Then they gotta come after him personally. Good to love that. Call roll, please.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes, by a roll call. But that is true, I mean, it actually, um, and we actually, I think, sent a letter to him saying that, that if he wanted to pursue the appeal, good luck, have fun, it's out of your own pocket. Surplus titles. That needs to go to Marvin though, Debbie, for intestines. Are we selling them or junking them, or what?
Selling them, option.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve two surplus titles.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, by a roll call vote. Both titles are approved. Next item on the agenda is signing of agreement with Habitat for Humanity. As revised, as discussed?
So moved. Second.
Motion second, call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, by a roll call vote, that's approved. Last item on the agenda, MAC dues.
Carrie, was you still needing to? Are you wanting to go ahead and go with it today, or you wanting to, okay.
So, after doing some due diligence and some research and talking with Dick Burke, I feel like being a member of MAC is, is worth the dues. Basically for new, newly-elected officials, I, I feel like it's a, it's a valuable benefit, maybe limited, but I do, I do feel like it's a benefit to the elected officials and so that's where I'm at.
We checked him on you. He knew where my vote was and where Mark's was, so.
Well, and it wasn't just, just talking to Dick, but, I mean, you know, I, I don't know. I, I understand where you're coming from with a, uh.
You were a new elected official last year, what did MAC get you? Not C-CAM, cause C-CAM.
Right, right. Well, there was some training, you know, even prior to me taking office that I went to, uh, two years ago, yes. So, you know, it's, uh, you know, not having a law background and, and not knowing things like you do, I, I think there, there is some benefit and, you know, and I realize these other, uh, the clerk and everybody has their own organizations as well, but, uh, there's still certain things that I think that they benefit from, from being in MAC and, um, so, you know, like I said, I mean, it, it could be a limited amount and, you know, I, I agree too that, you know, at, at the C-CAM meeting, you know, it, it was, you know, I could say that that, that organization probably isn't worth being, belonging to as well, but.
We're in contract with, uh, I guess Columbia or up there for two more years through, uh, C-CAM to do the training there. Apparently some of the other associations count MAC towards their training, the MAC thing not to like. So if we're gonna be down there anyway, I think we ought to count that as the training.
Well, the issue, I mean, that's a different issue. Getting into C-CAM's a different issue we're talking about.
Well, that's mandatory training.
Well, it's a waste of time because they don't offer us anything. I mean, we should be teaching the classes down there instead of learning or listening to them, cause they don't tell you anything. I mean, that's great. Sarah Parker Polly with DNR and Dave Nichols got up and gave very nice talks about what their departments are currently doing. Or in one case, the history of their department from nineteen seventy on or whatever it was. How's that continuing education? How's that help us be, you know?
You and I got to catch up on a lot of things, we was talking during the whole.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more and, you know, but is that?
But I look at MAC, now let's get back to what we're really, I mean, this issue's MAC, it's not C-CAM. So you look at MAC, what does MAC offer us? Well, they don't give us anything in the legislature. They don't hold their own against anybody in the legislature. Every time we have an issue as accounting commission, every time we have an issue as accounting commission, they decline to help us. Every time anybody else has an issue, they decline to help. The only things that they will actually pursue are things that they can't succeed at. I mean, you know, every year, I've been seven years. Every year the resolution is we need to get fully funded for the assessment fund and every year we need to be fully funded for the prisoner reimbursement cost. And every year they come back and tell us how they couldn't do it.
But along that argument, where would it be if they weren't up there fighting?
Same spot as it is right now.
It'd be less, we'd be getting. It'd be less. We'd be getting less. We'd probably get $12 a prisoner instead of
We don't get anything from
Eighteen.
I just, 8,500 bucks for what we don't get is not worth it to me. And you guys, you know, this is my last year up here. I fought this fight. This is my sixth year fighting this fight. I've lost the vote two to one every year. Uh I presume I'm gonna lose the vote again two to one, once again, but that's okay because in the end, it's 8,500 bucks and if you guys feel that we get actual demonstrable value from 8,500 bucks, that's great.
Even if you lose this one, you're still up two to one on me.
That's only today. That's only today. I think long term, I think long term, I'm farther down than you.
I'm the biggest loser today.
All right.
Well, I might be next week, so.
So I guess uh, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion, they can. Otherwise, we can stand in recess.
I'll make a motion that we retain the contract with MAC.
We don't contract with MAC. That's another problem. We just give them
Retain the membership.
We give them money and we, and we do not get a contract for services out of it. That's, I mean, I, I question whether that's even legal.
Well, if not, there's 113 other counties or 110 other counties that are gonna be in trouble. So I made a motion to retain the membership.
So we need to pay the bill.
To pay the bill.
Second?
Yep.
I guess there's a motion second. I mean, I would ask, I'm gonna ask Jill to research and see if we can pay that without a contract.
And Nichols.
And in the event that they don't, um I wanna recoup the funds. I really put them on a dime. But with that said, a call roll, please, Betty.
We got all that.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Uh Mark?
No.
He's like, call me, call me, call me.
And on that note, happy note. Do we have anything else? Now that it's 12:20, is my eyes spy? All right. I entertain a motion to stand in recess.
So moved.
Second.
All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, stand in recess. Thank you all very much. Yes, ma'am.
Jeff might know this better than I do, but um when you approved uh 10,000 for Thursday Night Live, is it on top of, or you mentioned those are already money budgeted, is that on top of that or is it?
It's out of that budget, yes. So we appropriate, we had in our budget 10,000 for Thursday Night Live and 10,000 for the Downtown Business Association. Uh we passed those as placeholders and we've decided only to move the 10,000 and the rest of it won't be spent. Yes, that's correct. We have to have a contract and No, no, no. Nope, it's, we're actually spending less out of our budget than we started with. How's that?
I wanted to make sure that I had that right. Thank you.
Taxpayers save $10,000.
But it is more than what we paid last
I never want to say you're spending more when you're not.
We are spending more than we spent last year on it. Last year was only five.
All right.
Last year was only five for salute.
But this is Thursday Night Live, not salute.
I thought you asked about salute, too.
No, I asked about Thursday Night Live.
Okay.
My support.
Well, that's on top of the
You did a great job. You do a great job.
I know. They'll be here.
So Mike Riley.
I know. We put the place over there, so we talk about that. We don't have to do the transfer.
No, he's, he's taking care of his mom this morning.
Okay, okay.
So we'll be back.
Okay.
We'll be back this afternoon.
The parking lot?
The parking lot and the building.
They own FHA building.
Thank you so much.
The library's got the lease on it.
We're drinking so much coffee at this time of day.
The library leases that.
I think you're
I mean, could you, maybe, I don't know, you know Mike?
Michael. I mean, I, my concern is and that space, we can probably just look at it, that space may probably isn't sufficient to its current configuration to prove it also.